Bowen. Sharon. Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board's purpose is the board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation, diversity in viewpoints and sufficient understanding of issues, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, and future rather than past or present, and proactivity rather than reactivity. Very good our roll call. Moving on to the approval of the motion. And a vote.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bitovich.
Hi.
And we're going to start by showcasing Manitou Springs Elementary School.
Sure. Principal Maria Masson and her team will present the wonderful things that are occurring at Manitou Springs Elementary School. All right, thank you. Today presenting will be Jenny Supple, our new assistant principal. Yes, we've had a nice little. Instructional coach. Such a lovely audience today, thank you so much.
They're here for you, Maria.
Oh, it's all for me? All right, well, on behalf of Manitou Springs Elementary School, thank you all for supporting our school. I realize as I prepare more about boards and what a wonderful job you all have done with open minds and big hearts and a commitment to our school and in our district. So we want to share with you a little bit about what's happening in our school. Oh, I don't, I'm not going to be on a computer, thank you. So throughout our presentation today, we're going to hear about our core values, relationships, learning and opportunity. And you'll hear little tidbits throughout the presentation, so if you'd like to click away. So at Manitou Elementary School, you all know that we have a phenomenal staff and a phenomenal group of students. We have 39 licensed staff, 25 classified staff. Our numbers are the same as last year. Last year, we had 420 students, this year, we have 420 students, 201 boys and 18 girls. We are expecting next year that our numbers will go up. We're shooting for 440, that's our target. Our ethnicity and race looks a lot like it did last year, 78.5% white, and that's very much what it looked like last year. So not a lot of changes in that area. So this might just reflects what we look like with our special services. So for 504s, we have 2% of students who are on 504 plans, so accommodation plans. And 6% of our students are on IP. For gifted students, which is also our on beyond students, we have 2%. And speech only, 6%. We didn't include that in our IP since, because these students are the students who are receiving speech only. They're not kiddos who are on IP's for specialized beyond speech. So 6% are speech only. And then multi-tier systems of support, there's about 6% students receiving academic support and 6% behavioral support. And then we wanted just to share a little bit, we're doing a flooding model, which we'll hear a little bit more about later. The things that we're using our gifted specialists for is servicing kids in our K through three grade levels that Mrs. Leonardo will talk about in a minute. So 47 students right now are getting seen globally by our DT specialists, and of those, nine are on advanced learning plans. And then the fun part is our action plan. So last year, I was a new principal, created an action plan with Cheryl Hobbs, our administrative support, who is just a wonderful, wonderful addition to our staff. We created an action plan based on some of the feedback we've been hearing from our staff. Things like they want to be more a part of the community, they wanted to have more of a voice, and they also wanted to have the opportunity to learn more from us and us to learn from them. So the things that we have done, we've had three points, and I'm going to talk about the first two, then the supple catch number three. We wanted to work on strengthening the culture of instructional feedback, meaning that we were going to get into classroom more with just grace and tenacity and support of our teachers and be more available to them. And then the other piece is that we hired an instructional coach this year, which was a change for us. We didn't have, so it's been a real shift in our thinking. So having Natasha available for teachers to seek out support, they wanted to learn something specific about the seven steps that we've been, that we're working on. Sorry, I feel like I'm standing in front of people. Here, would you like a chair?
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no worries, you could read the slides for me.
I'll do my best.
Okay. And so Natasha's always been really pivotal and where we want to go with feedback this year. And this will be, a lot of these settings will continue into next year. So the next part was increased collaborative communication and leadership opportunities. A lot of staff said we want to have more of a voice. So we started last year our building leadership team, and we have such a good team. We are really, really fortunate to have such a strong group of staff in our buildings, our paraprofessionals, teaching staff, who are represented. And then we talked about how Wednesday starts have really helped contribute to supporting those meeting and learning opportunities. And now we have a time with intervention times, which last year we didn't have because of COVID. We were so strictly following cohorts that we really didn't get the opportunity for teachers to meet with their own grade level teams. We've done a real big shift. And Ms. Supple's covered MTSS, and I'm going to let her cover that.
Hi, I'm Jenny Supple, Assistant Principal. And so our final point on our action plan was to include the school-wide structure for MTSS. And that kind of directly parallels what the district is doing at the district level. So utilize these late start Wednesdays to come together as grade level teams and meet and discuss where our kids are at. And it's not just our special education students, our DT, or our MTSS kids, but it's all of our kids. So we call them kid talks, and we try to pick a few kids at each grade level every MTSS Wednesday to talk about and just think through what do they need to be successful. The thing I appreciate a lot about this action plan as well is that it's a live document that we're always coming back to. So we go in very often as part of our BLT team and just kind of update and reflect where are we at with this? Did we accomplish some of these things that we set out to do? And we're always highlighting the things that we've got, and then sometimes we put a checkmark or we move something because we know that that was a big ask for this year, and we're going to take it on next year. And so I just appreciate that it's a part of our conversations, and it's not just a document that's been created and just sits there, but we're constantly coming back to it and reviewing it.
Then our professional development for the school, we started with a seven steps to a language-rich classroom, which is district-wide. So part of my role has been professional development in that area that we focused on, and then administration following through. And that whole idea is really a feature of the students, having them actively participate in their learning, having collaborative conversations in a structured way, interesting on topic. We've also pulled in write tools, which is just another tool to help support teachers in their readiness. Not a curriculum, it's more strategies. So again, really focusing on those instructional strategies. We talked, I'm going to come back with current flooding, but we talked about that MTSS and PLC Wednesdays. That's been a really big course this year, and the PLCs teams have really gotten to collaborate together about things they want to adjust so that students' learning is increasing in any areas that they feel like there may be some gaps and how to best fix that. We also did a whole new math curriculum, which I know you've heard about, and that we've chosen one. That was a big part this year in our professional developments. And another big one has been the increase in peer observations, which again really ties into that action plan, that constant feedback and having peers come in and taking and stepping away with great ideas, the things they can implement or questioning and creating that conversation between colleagues even horizontally and vertically as we go in and out of classrooms. And then with our flooding model, we kind of really dove into some of the data to see exactly, is it working? Our interventionist, are we polling groups in the right time? We're really focusing especially after COVID of polling any students that are in that red and yellow and those that are in the blue, how can we continue to extend their learning and enrich their experience? And for the first time, K through three, we're releasing an increase from beginning of year to middle of the year, where oftentimes we've actually seen some drops once the middle of your data has come out from DIBL's benchmarks. And this is the first time as we've seen that there's actually been an increase in the red and yellows from middle of the year throughout previous years. So that just gives us some good feedback that what we're doing is in fact working.
All right. And just kind of going off what already has talked about, we're very excited with how the flooding model has panned out this year. We've been very intentional with our MTSS time to really make sure that we're meeting kids' needs right where they're at. So this, what it shows is our iReady data. And we initially, we're trying to look back at previous years, but iReady, we know is new to us, and last year was COVID. So this is kind of the best data that we have that can kind of help us to determine if, you know, that flooding model's still working. So they kind of go into, so kindergarten, beginning of the year, and then kindergarten, the middle of the year. First grade, beginning and middle, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. So it just gives us an idea of how our kids, these are the reds and yellows, and if we see that drop and we're getting more kids in the green, that means we're having kids reach that benchmark, which is a good thing. There's also this line that goes along the top, and this gray line is the national 50th percentile. So you can kind of get an idea of how our school is kind of doing comparative to the national 50th percentile. So sometimes we're a little above, but we're staying, or sometimes we dip below, but on average, we're staying pretty much with that. And then this is just our math beginning and middle of the year, so same thing. We have kindergarten from beginning of the year to middle of the year, and then first grade beginning to middle, all the way down. And again, this is following that same blue and gray line, pretty consistent with the national 50th percentile.
And then this is more kind of on the double side of the reading, which kind of we talked about when we looked between the scores from middle of the year beginning of the year, just our reds and yellows as they've increased. And that kind of a big key point that I was talking about looking at our flooding model was if we were to look here at first, first grade has the biggest jump from beginning of the year to middle of the year, so when they have to actually read a passage for fluency. And that often really has, where we end up seeing an increase in our red and yellows. And this was the first year, and we went back to about 2016, 17, this was the first year that we actually saw a decrease in red and yellows even with that big jump that just really supports and proves that what we're doing is in fact working. So it's kind of something to bring our eyes towards. And then we can see if we go into grades two and three, similar, kind of more red, more green and blues as we've moved on, so.
And this is just another piece of data that we use to help us make decisions about how to best meet kids' needs. This is our CFAST data from last year. Last year's test was a little different because we didn't take all the tests. So third and fifth grade only took ELA, but you can see that Manitou Springs Elementary School is passing the state average, which is very good for us. And then fourth grade only took math, and you can see that that fourth grade is about 8% below the state average. So we're really excited and hopeful that that new math curriculum will help. And then obviously, you know, we have some training and some instructional coaching that we can put in that area as well.
Right, so the last few slides are just talking about our deep learning relationships. We have just such a terrific school, with such great staff. It's been wonderful, we've been welcoming families back into our building, so we've been able to do things like science fair again this year. We had some fabulous projects, I know some of you all were able to come and check those out. This is preschool doing just amazing, really great things in preschool. So one of the things that is in our next slide is just that we focus a lot on field trips, not only in our community, but in Colorado Springs as a whole, fourth grade especially, does some really wonderful field trips, really getting kids into some wonderful places. My kid, I still remember, they're nine at the museum, and so do my husband and I with sore backs and everything else. But if some of you, maybe you've seen our kindergartners going to the post office, the police station, meeting with Mandy, and just getting to know that police officers are safe people and that it's, they know where to locate it in their own community. So that has been such a focus, and we maintain that, and we're continuing to get back into our field trips. We're also hoping we did fifth grade camp at the beginning of this year. We're hoping that we went to fifth grade camp, hopefully with Mr. Bert Shale's predecessor. We were hoping that we will merge the camps together. It used to be that the original reason that we did fifth grade camp was to bring Manitou Springs Elementary and you pass the others, that they knew each other, so that they went on to sixth grade. It wasn't a whole new community of students, it was some kids that they had already met. So that's one of our goals, is to keep those community connections. And then our PAC and SAC have been a little bit different this year because we have some families who haven't been fully comfortable getting back to the building yet, but it's getting better. And so we do meetings, sometimes virtually, sometimes emails, sometimes in person. It's been a mix of a lot of things. Our PAC, I was able to grant probably 3,000, close to 3,000 in awards this year just to support, not just, to support teachers and students with projects, bringing in books for equity for young students, bringing in new materials and supplies. They've also done, they do our grocery reward program, so if you all want to sign up, everybody in the audience as well. If you connect your King SuperCard to the school, we get a percentage, I think like 3%. So every quarter, we get a check of about $1,000 that goes in to support the PAC that goes into returning that to our community. So please consider that if you haven't already. And then they do a lot of fundraising as well. Okay, you can go to the next one, you're right on. Keep me moving. Our school accountability committee, we have a wonderful group of parents who went through some of these slides with us and talked about their feedback on what it looked like from a parent's perspective on who we are, what we're doing, what we're not doing, talking about the math curriculum and some of those things. So we have five very active parents who meet regularly with us. And then we're trying to maintain outreach. So every week, we do a school newsletter, which I hear sometimes is a lot of information in it. It starts with kind of what's going on at school, the dates, and then all the flyers about coming events. We address volunteer opportunities, parent volunteers are back in our building, so we're trying to really increase their contact back in. And then really making that outreach connection to our new families coming in. So right now, we have a rolling list of families who are applying to Manitou Springs Elementary. And either Jenny or I call them and say, hi, tell us a little bit about your kid. I would love to have you come and visit, see if we're the right fit for you, and you're the right fit for us. And then the addition, I just want to say, having a social worker, thank you to everybody who's supporting getting social workers into schools. I feel like this year especially, given that we're coming off the year of COVID, we've really been able to wrap our arms around our community, not only of our teachers and staff, but of our students. We've had a lot of really impacted kiddos this year, so that's been wonderful. And then Ms. Supple's worked really hard on getting our Facebook page up and running, and so you can see some new additions on there. And I will also take the opportunity to tell you that on our Facebook page, we have our School of Excellence night coming up on April 26. And we have some, if you'd like to join us, Adams Mountain Cafe does a dinner at our school, just to, I'm sure they take a nice loss at our, to support us growing our specialized funds. So the funds we started this years ago, just to support some of our students in special education, not necessarily them, but the paraprofessionals who work with them to get some training. If they saw this really cool training or maybe materials they wanted to access, we started our own funding support. And so every year, we do a dinner. This year, well, we haven't done it in two years, so it's not every year. We had done it every year up until a couple of years ago. This year, we're also doing a tour for families, so from 4:00 to 5:30, any incoming folks who want to take a look at what Manitou Springs Elementary has to offer, we'll have a classroom, or I should say hallway displays, and then we'll also have all of our science fair boards. So I have these for everybody, so you can't count easily, I won't be making sure. And then we just want to, oh, I have a new one, can I show you the? Oh, well, you can, I have an updated link, we just shortened it because it was a little long. We just interviewed some of the students about what they liked about Manitou Elementary. The shortened one's two minutes, it's three minutes, so if you can just hear the voices of some of our students.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is gym. My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is gym and recess. My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is reading, gym, and recess. My favorite part about sports is.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is all the art.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is that people there and teachers are nice to very young kids.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary School is intervention.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary School is.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary School is our.
I like elementary school because it's.
Get to work.
See, I'm glad that I have a better school than my old, boring one.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary is that I learn new, I learn new, super cool things every day.
Favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is learning new things.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary School is math.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is math and recess.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is reading.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is doing writing.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is how nice all of the teachers and all of the communities.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is all my friends.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is my teachers and my friends.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School and how nice our teacher is.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is the teachers, all the fun activities we get to do, also and how safe and how the teachers protect us, and also the fun activities we get to.
And yeah.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is that people are nice.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary is art.
My favorite thing about Manitou Springs Elementary School is how it is very creative.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is math.
Hi, my name is Ryder, and my favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is probably the experience.
My favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is getting a writing.
Hello, I'm Ingrid, and my favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is the staff.
Hello, my name is Haven, and my favorite thing about Manitou Elementary is the art and the overall diversity of the students.
I'll just say one of the beautiful things about Manitou Elementary Schools that we know every student by name. I think all of us who work at Manitou have told you every city's name, we have a relationship, we know where the family's been, what they've been through, how we can support them, really tight-knit community. And I would love for any of us to answer any of the questions you may have.
I love that you ended it with students so that we can all remember why we're here together. I also love that despite coming back to a year that was not what educators wanted, was still some upheaval, that you talk about how excited you are about the support you have in place and the progress that students were able to make. Expecting that you're probably even more excited about how things are going this semester with more continuity and looking forward to next year.
That's the thing, just having some better staff, we really do have a stellar staff. And now that we have an A T and we've got an instructional coach, I just think that the world is our oyster.
Moving into public comments. We do have more people than usual, which is kind of exciting in some ways, because that just means we're engaging the community and we can channel some energy into people getting together. I know that probably as a career educator, I know that sometimes public comment is misunderstood. So I'm going to read what we have in policy, and then I'm going to go ahead and just give a few little caveats of things over the past years of experience that some people are like, what, why are you doing that? Right, too, because if anything, we noticed that people still don't maybe get all of the aspects of how boards work, and I don't want anybody to feel disappointed, because when expectation is met, that is what creates disappointment. So let's make sure we're clear on that. So public comment, during times of general public comment at a regular meeting, comments and questions may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of schools. Comments at special meetings must be related to the call of the meeting. During times of public comment on specific agenda items, comments shall be confined to the topic of the agenda item being considered by the board. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. The board encourages the discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted in executive session. Is a time limit for speakers? Comments from the audience are limited to three minutes per speaker with no immediate response from the board except when deemed necessary by the board president. A single spokesperson should be selected by groups or organizations desiring to address the board on an agenda topic in order to avoid presenting repetitious information. When there is a large number of speakers to be heard, the presiding officer may shorten the time for each individual speaker and may limit the amount of time for all speakers. So again, just understanding that when we approach, we'll have three minutes. I think our vice president is doing the timing, and she will let you know, going to give like a 10-minute, 10-second warning, not a minute. 10 seconds, that's a good long time, I hope you have nothing else on your agenda. 10-second warning, and then you'll know, right? We're going to put you right there. Okay, awesome, so you'll be seated or standing at that area, and then we will not respond. I will say thank you, and then that is for the board to consider at a later date in time during our. Again, please, again, refrain in keeping it Manitou, Manitou. Although I've worked for District 49, and I've worked for other districts over 30 years, I know what contentiousness and divisiveness can lead to, and so we want to stay Manitou in all our comments, but we certainly don't want to censor. And so we want to stay Manitou in all our comments, but we certainly don't want to censor anyone either. So please, three minutes. Thank you. Okay? So.
The first one is Sarah Lindster.
So just to understand the process, so people, they know when they're up, they're getting to a one for something.
They were all brought over.
All right. My husband's in the hall, so. Thanks for having me here today. I'm Sarah Lindster, and I have a son who is in, he's a freshman, and I have a daughter who is in fifth grade. And the reason that I felt compelled to come and visit today was because of the disappointing news that Principal Cole is choosing to leave. And that got me to thinking a little bit about all the turnover that we've had in the last year. According to the records on the website, we've lost forty educators, principals, support staff in the 2021-22 school year, and we've hired thirty-nine people back. But the reason I want to ask today, the thing that I'd like to ask today is, are we performing exit interviews with departing individuals being led by a non-district, wait, with the departing? Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Okay.
Are we performing exit interviews with people who are not connected to the school? So that we can get as much information as possible about why people are choosing to leave our district? Because I think it goes without saying, many of us choose to be here, we're choice parents. And so whenever we start to see this kind of attrition, we wonder, is there more we could be doing? And to that end, I would like to ask the district to consider doing those exit interviews again with someone who's not directed, directly part of the school district. And then my other request would be for some more focus groups. I know we have some going on now, but they seem to be kind of focused on sexual assault, the late relationships that happened in the past, and I'm much more interested in knowing about what's going on today with the staff, with the administrators. What can we as parents be doing to help? And basically, I just want to know if we can try and get a little bit more transparency to the parents and a little bit more anonymity, if you will, for the people who are here working on our behalf. So that if there is a concern that they don't feel like they have to just be quiet and hold it inside them until maybe they have to leave. And that's the last thing we want. As choice parents, you know, we don't want to have to look for another place because we love it here, but we also are very concerned about what's going to happen. I think that's my keys.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Yeah, yeah, actually, like that. Well, we don't do a reply here.
Okay.
We take the board, under takes everything under advisement. If you can have your, if you don't mind, hand your written to.
Or if you want to email it to.
Yes, let's email, because this is what I.
Typos and. Not a problem, not a problem.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah.
And the next one up, I have is Jessica Moan.
Can you start, Miss Johnson? We'll go ahead.
Members of the board, on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, I received a response from Tina Vidovic, Board of Education President, to my request for an appeal for review, which was dated April 4th, 2022, which does not follow the Board of Education policy GBKA-R. The policy states the following, when the grievance has already been presented to the superintendent, which it was on February 24th. Step four states, if the grievance is not solved at step three, the employee may file a written request for review by the Board of Education, which will be held within fifteen working days of receipt of the report from step three. The board's review of the grievance may be held in executive session at the request of the employee, the superintendent, or the board. The decision of the board shall be final and shall be made in writing within fifteen working days of the board's review. Per this specific board policy, a review of the grievance should have been held. However, instead of a review in accordance with that policy, the Board of Education seemingly made the decision to ignore policy and refer me back to the same people who rejected the grievance of their own behaviors, which I claim breaks the policy of the organization. For context, remember, administrators working as agents of the superintendent broke policy when they refused to staff their rights under policy for a representative to be present in procedure meetings, as detailed in the original grievance documentation dated January 25th, 2022. During a meeting held on February 24th, 2022, Susie Thompson and Dr. Elizabeth Domain found that their administration did not break policy GBKAR. There was no policy or practice presented as rationale to why they, Susie Thompson and Dr. Elizabeth Domain, found that the actions of their administration did not break policy when I was not allowed to serve as the staff-selected person to assist in meetings on January 21st, 25th. On April 4th, 2022, I sent all, we sent you all a request for you to review the decision by Susie Thompson and Dr. Elizabeth Domain in response to my grievance. However, it seems by the correspondence sent by Tina Vidovic dated April 12th, 2022, the Board of Education also elected not to follow their own policy. I would like to know why the Board of Education agreed on this course of action in opposition of their own governing policy. Was this decision based on a collective board discussion? At this point, I would like to request that the Board of Education members meet with me to review the series of events outlined in my grievance and appeal letter in accordance with policy GBKA-R, especially as it appears that the target disparate treatment I have claimed to have occurred in my grievance continues. I look forward to working with you all to resolve this injurious situation so that I may remain a highly effective, masterfully innovative, and beloved educator within my home district of Manitou Springs School District 14. Sincerely, Dr. Jessica Moan, public school educator for twenty-three years.
Bill McCracken. Hi there, good evening. Of my twenty years as a special educator, I spent sixteen of those years working for the UBS BOCs. The value of the BOCs goes beyond the monetary investment it requires, remember. In Dr. Domain's letter to the district last week, she noted that none of the D-14 positions would be affected by this change. What I would like the board to consider is not necessarily how our jobs will or will not be eliminated due to this change, but how our services to students will change, which is in effect to the positions of D-14. Access to appropriate services for students in transition between the ages of eighteen to twenty-one will be limited. Currently, one teacher serves the students in this special population for all three districts. The cost of hiring a teacher for this population for only our district would be expensive and therefore an unlikely solution. Therefore, these responsibilities would likely fall on the current high school special education teachers. When I arrived in this district eight years ago, I was asked to undertake these responsibilities, and it was nearly impossible and most definitely not the most effective services for our students. These services that our current transition program provides to students are not only vital to the success of our most profound student population, but it is a legal responsibility to continue services according to faith. I would be happy and elated to speak with any and all of you in more detail about the intricacies of eighteen to twenty-one transition services anytime, and I would highly recommend observing the work that our current transition teacher does before making a decision about the BOCs. Over my sixteen years in this BOCs, we have sometimes seen these services outsourced to the Colorado Springs community. But because of the work of the past BOCs, our students have now been able to access these vital services here in their own community. Thanks to our membership in the BOCs, we have access to occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech pathologists, audiologists, a teacher of the deaf and blind, and other itinerant services for which we would have to outsource or hire ourselves without the BOCs. We would also lose access to the School to Work Alliance program, from which dozens of our Mustangs have received employment support from age fourteen through the age of twenty-five. I'm looking forward to hearing the rationale for the dissolution of the past BOCs, as I currently have very little information besides the email sent last week informing, informing us of this potential change to our special education programming. I also attended the Woodland Park School Board meeting last week, where Dr. Neal, their superintendent, communicated that the dissolution was indeed happening, and that it was because we, Manitou Springs School District 14, had decided to, and they quote, "pull out of the BOCs." The implications to both the smaller districts besides ours will also be significant, if not catastrophic, to their special education services. The message from Dr. Neal and the message from Dr. Domain are quite different, and so I urge you to be transparent and clear in your communication to your staff who are deeply invested in the BOCs and the services that it provides. I would also recommend discussing this with your special education staff across the district before making such an impactful decision. Thank you.
This is Marcia Wymer.
Marcia Wymer, I am a staff member, resident, parent, and taxpayer. I moved here before I was aware of such a thing as being a choice parent specifically to be in this school district. I'm here to make sure parents, community members, and all stakeholders understand that there are a lot going on in D-14 that is right, good, and in the best interest of children and their education. I have full trust and confidence in our administration at all levels to do what is best for students and staff. I do, however, have concerns about the focus of our Board of Education. I was the board secretary for two years, and I do have an understanding of the work and the, and the policy. I will do my best to address the board as one entity, as, as it is their charge to speak as one voice. But it is, it is my opinion that they have lost the focus to do so. In speaking as independent members, this board has begun to muddy the waters from working within their own policies to dabbling in administration, and has crossed the line of their charge to delegate authority to the superintendent to carry out the educational program and to report back to the board and monitoring reports each month. Delegation to the superintendent, when followed correctly, allows the board to oversee that the outcomes of the district align with what the community and all stakeholders value, and assures the superintendent accomplishes these outcomes. The board instead violates its own policies time and time again by sharing information and violates Policy B C School Board Member Conduct and Policy B C B School Board Member Conflict of Interest, shares their independent judgment and information, Policy B C A-E1, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and conducts these actions outside of a meeting and uses their powers individually as a violation of Policy BBA, which states all powers of the board lie in its, in its actions as a group. It is my suggestion that this board has the opportunity and ability to correct that path and return to their lane of delegating an operation of the, or of the educational program to the superintendent, their interpretation of the end statements. The board should observe and evaluate reasonable, reasonable interpretation of superintendent outcomes through monitoring executive limitation policies. D-14 has experienced some attrition due to the strains of the pandemic, yes. However, we have also had many long-term staff and principals serve for several years and earn a retirement after their dedication to public education. There is nothing unusual here, but there is an opportunity to make great hires for the future. Allow us to continue to do that for these students without the distractions of a board that is not speaking as one voice and a small group of staff members who don't represent the whole. Less we go the way of so many other districts of board members across the country with recall petitions and divisiveness. Let's work together so we can do our duties and what's best for children. Thank you. Thank you.
Kimberly Spraggins. Hello. How's everyone? My name's Kimberly. Three kids that are in the school district, two of them have been since way back preschool, all the way through graduated twenty-fourteen, twenty-seventeen. I've never felt this passionate about losing our staff members ever. I am sad, I am horrified at where our district is going, what it's looking like, why they're leaving. Maybe it's not important to some of the others, but it is important to me. I am not very fond of late start Wednesdays. I know there's some profitable things here, but I don't feel that they're all that great. I feel that we're not, as parents, really utilized when we don't know which day it is or not day it is, because it was supposed to be every day, and now it's not every week. And then we get late night calls of stuff that changes. Not very fond of that. The investigation, who, who asked about the investigation? As far as I was concerned, it was completed by the police department. Why were our good teachers being sent on leave? And they were out of the school for how long? And why were substitutes taking care of our kids? Some of these seniors were watching movies and doing nothing for time? That's, that's ridiculous. Where was the education for them at that time? I saw you pass the list of teachers that are leaving. And Blaine Grebe was one of my teachers. Mr. DeBor. Kristy C. Christensen. These are, I believe, right before they would get full para-retirement, I think, if I'm corrected on that, maybe not. But I just don't understand why these good teachers, eight teachers, are leaving. I don't have much time left to receive that. And that brings up my very, very passionate one, is we are losing our principal at high school. This, again, we're losing how many principals? How many teachers every year? Are we doing exit interviews? Are we finding out why they're leaving? Are we asking parents, and are we giving teachers a room to speak that they're not going to be reprimanded if they do speak? Why aren't we knowing as parents, our kids, we trust that you guys are taking care of this? But when you see all this chaos that was going through, through COVID and everything, we finally were happy when we got to see Jesse Hall walk in our, on their soundboard. Really great. He's been with us, he knows our kids, he's been working towards good things. I enjoy getting that phone call from him. I enjoy getting his voice to tell us, hey, reminder, this is happening, your kid's not coming here, your kid's not going there. Okay, and I just, I think we really need to figure out why we're having exceptional teachers leave. This Avery, that woman always has a smile on her face. She's leaving. This must be a really good reason, and I would like to know why. As a parent, I'm just really worried. We're losing these great, great educators. And I've never had to come here before. I never had, felt like I needed to say anything. I do feel that now. And I really hope, as a parent, Cole, we all get some answers. And we don't have to accept all the resignations. I'd rather not. So we need to get it together, guys. It's not the district I signed up for. Sad.
Is there any public response type? Excuse me? Where you had said there were three minutes of response, is that? Three minutes of response? Never mind. Eighty, you took it as the answer. Thank you, Ms. McQuill. You're welcome. I'll write this. Next is Kendall Kelly.
My name is Kendall Kelly, and I work as a payroll specialist for the Manitou Springs School District. I have lived in Manitou for twenty years and had a daughter graduate in 2020 after attending grades K through twelve. I felt compelled to provide public comment after hearing disparaging remarks made about our school district and our leadership. I wanted to give my vote of confidence and remind our community what district leadership has navigated us through over the past three years. In October of 2019 was the Westboro Baptist Church protest. Our leadership was poised, organized, and coordinated, an amazing community-wide response. Then in March of 2020 was the COVID shutdown and the incredible pivot and transition to remote learning. So many challenges came along with COVID, but our leadership buckled down and dedicated themselves to starting the 2021 school year in person, and that goal was accomplished. The 2122 school year came with its own challenges. In the span of a couple of months, two former high school teachers were arrested for sexual assault. This was a shock to my system, and I felt disgusted by what I learned about the actions of former administrators. The leaders in place now are having to pick up the pieces and put our district back together. They are the ones doing the hard work, not covering up bad behavior, and finally holding staff accountable. I'm upset that our tarnished reputation is being blamed on our current administration, and that is not the case at all. In closing, I just wanted to say that I'm thankful for our current leadership. Your hard work and your dedication has not gone unnoticed. I'm thankful for the procedures and the transparency that your leadership has put in place.
Sorry, Mandy Strider. I'm Officer Strider, the School Resource Officer for the Manitou Springs School District. I'm here to speak in favor of making the Director of Safety and Security, which I will now refer to as the DSS, a full-time position. The DSS works alongside school staff and community members on all levels regarding student safety issues, building security during and after school hours, emergency systems, and more. To name a few critical jobs, the DSS manages several school safety grants and oversees the private security company that the district partners with to provide armed security officers at the middle school and both elementary schools. DSS and the school principal are usually the first contact for the security guards when an incident occurs. Further, due to the challenging geographic layout of Manitou Springs, the DSS works closely with the security officers at each school to reevaluate and improve traffic control during pickup and drop-off times. Admittedly, it's a work in progress. The DSS ensures that school safety drills are conducted every month at each school, that alarm systems are working properly, that emergency medical equipment is up to date, and that we have the most effective video surveillance systems in place. The DSS is essential in creating operation plans for school events as well as emergency planning for lockdowns, lockdowns, evacuations, and reunitions. The DSS will coordinate efforts with outside agencies during large-scale disasters such as wildfires and the use of school buildings as required. DSS educates staff and students on the importance of safe to tell as well as investigative tips received through this platform. Investigations often may be talking to students, staff, parents, and reviewing video footage. The DSS also coordinates educational opportunities for students such as the upcoming school safety prayer that will provide information regarding safe driving, staying sober, not vaping, teen domestic violence, and preventing sex assaults. These proactive measures are vital to a healthy school system. Further, not all school safety and security issues rise to the occasion of requiring assistance from law enforcement. The DSS works closely with and coordinates roles and responsibilities with the School Resource Officer in handling everything from lost iPhones to large-scale critical incidents. This close partnership, it's invaluable and addresses the situations appropriately and with the best possible outcomes in mind. The DSS must also have exceptional communication skills to deal with difficult and complex scenarios such as working with the mental health team to conduct threat and suicide assessments. Lastly, this position requires an enormous amount of relationship development. The DSS works closely with our other first responders, the Department of Human Services, TESSA Safe Passage, and the Department of Health. While this is only a synopsis of this position, I hope it demonstrates and stands to an importance. Thank you.
Brenda Holmes, Stantum.
Three minutes. We can't see anything out there, so we didn't know who was being pointed to. So, my name is Brenda, and I'm the proud parent of two young ladies who have had the honor of attending every school within their district. And I am an educator in another district. I apologize for not being here earlier in years past. Manitou rightly advertised itself as a district focused upon the whole child with a holistic approach to develop and encourage kind human beings. Before emotional intelligence was coined, this district had those much-needed pieces in place, from Partners for Healthy Choices to Arts 14. The children in D-14 dabbled in the things I have been fighting for as an educator in D-11. It has been shared that in previous administrations, the common first question was, is it best for children? From there, is it best and doable for teachers? Then, can the budget support it? But people were creative and resourceful. Even those administrations were not perfect. Wonderful things happened due to thinking outside the box and being innovative. There was a culture of support, authentic, constructive, and inspiring for all staff. Now I am here to ask questions and express concerns. I've reached out to others who have helped me develop questions about where the district was and is going. In a quest to reimagine or intensify, you should not break or erase what has been shown to be so beneficial. Shouldn't one learn from the hard work, the institutional and community knowledge that built Manitou for decades, and add to it? Otherwise, those who created the vision and the successes are disheartened, feel defeated, and potentially are in the way. I am glad that there are few, or many, who have had wonderful experiences under the current administration. Are the trusted people who I have had conversations with me wrong? Or did they just have a different experience and why? Please listen. I know educators are challenged by these last few years that sent us into the unknown. I have colleagues moving on or changing their career focus, but in my detailed conversations, I am hearing a different theme: overreach and oversight, paranoia, lack of transparency, insecurity, an unhealthy system with a culture of fear, and repeatedly the potential for retaliation. One word or innuendo said to a potential employer can ruin both a job prospect and a career and one's reputation in the small town. I am taking a risk by doing this, and I don't do it lightly. Please be willing to pause, be willing to reflect. What is Manitou? Wonderfully gifted people are working fiercely within the district right now. But have we failed those who have already left by not asking questions? Talk to your favorite teachers, current and past, and then talk to more. Talk to administrators from current and past. We are asking the community to have discussions, ask questions, expect real answers. Reach out to myself and others with your questions. Offer support to all employees of the district. We are asking the board to research our concerns and for the following questions to be addressed at the next board meeting. So I have copies of these questions for you. I will read. Out of time. If you can submit those, please. Thank you. Yep. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Jonathan Dewey.
I thought that was our seat.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jonathan Dooley. I don't know if everybody knows me. I'm a parent of students. I'm a business owner in the town, and the hat I'm here to wear tonight is I'm also the scout master for Troop 18. Okay, we're a 104-year-old Boy Scout troop here in Manitou. We are the fifth oldest Boy Scout troop of the nation that's been continually operating. That being said, we've had a bit of problems with COVID. Both of our Cub Scout packs, one at the elementary school here in Manitou and the one at the elementary school at the Mute Pass, have disbanded. We lost access to the buildings, and we lost access to communication with youth. That, we also lost access to parents because we lost those accesses. So why I'm coming in here is because at one point, we had 85% of the youth that you pass elementary school was in my Cub Scout pack for the boys. We went co-ed. So now we have a co-ed program for both Cub Scouts and for Boy Scouts. So having this program now, I would like to come to the board and just ask for support. We do no longer meet at the middle school for the Boy Scouts. We meet at the church in Manitou. The reason why is because during COVID, that's where they had to wash all the screens. So we lost access to the gym, to the community room and the lunchroom. That's not my problem. My problem is accessing the elementary school. I want to try to get back in and have, I've talked to Mr. Tremel tonight about getting access to coordinating with Arts 14 to let us have our program coexist with theirs. Getting back into a gym or into the classrooms so that we can actually have afternoon meetings with the kids right after school and then have their parents pick them up. I'm looking for communications. Every time I go and I say, hey, I'd like to get a blast out to the parents. Yeah, if you want to put it in the newsletter? No, you have a 15% re-rate. So the newsletter is not very often good to get to the third page at the bottom to say, hey, the Cub Scouts are having something. So I did talk to Mr. Tremel tonight about getting blasts out that, like he does with Arts 14. So I'm here for that reason. Basically, because we're trying to reestablish these two packs. And I wanted to come to the board first so that they were aware that I'm going to start needling my way in. And if anybody knows me, I'm good at this. So I'm going to start going and approaching both the elementary school principals, the elementary school contacts, along with the middle school to get us back in for our advertising, our promotions. We're planning on having a rocketry day. I'm trying to set that up right now. Some of our parents here have kids that have gone through our program. I mean, so we are well-established. It's just we've gone three years with having no youth coming into our program. So we're getting a little top-heddy and we're getting a little older. And I love to be a Cub Scout leader, so it's really time to start getting the Cub Scouts invigorated, the program. So that's why I'm standing in front of you today is just to let you know that I'm going to start this program again, and I wanted you guys, I want to ask for your support in it. And if I come to you and say, hey, we're trying to try to do this, like try to have a rocketry day up on one of the fields kind of thing, just to have some support. So that's me.
Donna Robbins.
So my name is Donna Robbins, and I'm coming to you today as a wife of a teacher and a parent. And it's going to be really hard. I read through all the guidelines to what I can and can't say. It is going to be very difficult for me today to get through what I need to say. So first, I want to start with, our family has experienced firsthand what was in the Pike's Peak Bulletin article. It hit home with my family really hard regarding the negative treatment toward staff and the denial of rights that were given in board policies. So I think, you know, the first place I'm going to start is I know some of you guys know the board policy, but I want to read it just to reiterate my point. Okay, so under the retaliation policy. All right.
Yeah. Take a deep breath. Reset your time.
All right, so under the retaliation policy, it's section G of Personnel and Code GPL. The very first section of this policy says, "It is a policy of the Manitou Springs School Board that positive employee relations and morale can be achieved and maintained in an environment that promotes ongoing open communication between administration, staff, faculty, and students, including open and candid discussions of problems and concerns. The school board encourages administration, staff, and students to express their issues, concerns, and opinions without fear of retaliation or repressal. Therefore, the school board considers any acts or threats of retaliation constitute a serious violation of the school board policy." And I'm going to kind of skip down just a little bit. "Any employee who retaliates against a fellow employee or a student is a violation of the law and/or this policy is subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment." And I'm going to skip to the very back of them. That's how you guys want. "If this complaint involves the superintendent, the employee shall make a report to the President of the Board of Education." I want an answer as to why the retaliation was filed on January 14th by a staff member. And if you've heard from people comment, we don't respond. So I understand that, but I think that everyone in the community and the board and the other staff and the teachers need to know why policy is here if staff has to be held accountable to it and administration does not. Administration board, that's what they're there for. And so when you create these policies, they need to be followed. And because of these reasons, that is why the staff does not feel safe. That is why the staff is leaving. That is why we have 28 resignations this year. And so I think that this needs to be looked at, and there's a lot of things that need to be looked at. And if it's not, things can get a lot worse. And so we ask community need to come together and support the staff, and I just don't know that that hasn't happened.
Is Christie Marklot?
I feel like terrible kitten from Garfield, but I'm here to say thank you. So we have robotics is what we're here for. Hello, Manitou Springs School District 14 Board of Education. My name is Christie Marklot. I'm a community member, employee, and parent. Robotics began in 2009 with Todd Brevis and one team. Today, in 2022, we have 27 teams, K through 12. Nearly 15% of our students participate competitively. Our high school teams run free summer camps. This year, we had 51 participants in the fall fourth and fifth grade level with EV3 robots, 20 more in the sixth and eighth grade level, seven participants at FTC Junior University Level, since right over there, seven through 12, with a metal robot in a 12 by 12 field. They won the judges' choice awarded a competition and went to state. Seventy-two more participants this spring for our K through three level with four through six grade mentors and some JV team mentors. Coming in to mentor the mentors. Twenty-four participants full or part-time with our spring FRC Varsity Robotics, level nine through 12. They raised money for their own California tournament in addition to our Denver tournament. Thank you, district, for supporting us at that tournament. They got second place with their alliance in three teams out of San Diego, California. Your elementary coaches, you have six of them. You have an incredible middle school coach in Marcus Jordan and myself. Our varsity coaches are Marcus again, Steve Bethke, Todd Brevis, and who's still here, and Morgan Shepherd. Mentors at the varsity level include myself with the promotional items link. John Clune Jr., John Clune III, a 2019 graduate. Ian Gutierrez, a parent. Kira Jordan, a spouse of a coach and a glutton for punishment. Parents have supported funding our FTC team to an overnight event before state. And parents at the elementary even sponsored and paid for teams that could no longer be granted by owing. Countless community members, Juanas, Dr. Filari, Tycho, Chip Spangler, Amerigent, Alex Grab, Pink Realty, O'Malley Family, Wagle Family, Teacher Maria Warpo, and so much more. At last, I am here to thank you, the board, for your support in our administration and admin building staff. Thank you. Thank you for supporting fabulous kids doing fabulous things. Patty, Melissa, Kat, Matt, High School Media and Tech, Buildings and Grounds, Transportation, Marsha, Suzie, Danny, Gail, Angie. Thank you, the entire middle school staff. Lastly, thank you to administration, who would not let me name them first. Cameron, Elizabeth, Jessie, Dustin, Maria, Chris, and more for all you do to promote and celebrate and provide spaces in which kids can soar. From all 213 of us participants, coaches, and mentors, thank you.
My name is Steve Wyler. The purpose of my public comment today is threefold. First, I'm compelled to comment on our superintendent, Dr. Elizabeth DeMay. I served on the Board of Education for August 2014 through November 2019, when the board hired Elizabeth in June 2019. Elizabeth possesses the academic credentials, public education knowledge, personal character, and public school leadership ability needed to serve as a superintendent. Elizabeth brings a level of compassion, credentials, and ethical leadership to our cherry school district that is right and desperately needed to solve problems for today and well into the future. Second, I have concerns regarding an article I read in the April 14th edition of Pike's Peak Bulletin. It's called "Let's Engage, Ask Questions, Expect Answers About Education." The article goes further to call community members to join the author to make demands and accusations. Public comment at Board of Education regular meeting is highly encouraged. It provides a means for stakeholders and community members to have a voice. I am certain people will be heard today. However, the place for open dialogue and district responses or expecting answers about education is best served through formal processes called community engagement. This is an important function of the Board of Education. The board must lead an organization thoughtful session in with the community as a result of this public comments received today. Third, I have deep concerns with the Board of Education and the appearance of conflicts of interest with some of its board Third, I have deep concerns with the Board of Education and the appearance of conflicts of interest with some of its board members. I have heard the community members, the school staff, that dissenting board members share information that unethically attempts to give rogue board members attention for matters of personal interest with perhaps causing harm to our school's culture while misleading our community. The Board of Education has very important and difficult jobs serving its community. The board to set, the job of the board is to set policy and monitoring the superintendent's progress toward these ends. The board delegates authority to the superintendent. The board must seek understanding in concert with the superintendent to understand the community's values with its school district. Board members must actively debate within Board of Education meetings that result in action or voting to decide on matters that support the community and especially its students. The vote passes, the board has spoken with one voice. If the vote fails, the board has spoken with one voice. If any one or two board members do not favor the result of the vote, the board members must not act independently, influence others to act and change the will of the board. The voting constituency of M S S D 14 elected the members of the Board of Education. The last two elections were uncontested, which means those legally ran for the board seat or elected without votes. The community must do better with candidates participating in community engagement. The Board of Education must do better conducting formal community engagements so it knows what is valued. Once the community input is embraced, the board must act. Take action through policy, delegating authority to a superintendent, and then monitoring the superintendent's legal and ethical progress. Thank you.
Michelle Beckman. Natalie will let you know. My name is Michelle Beckman and I'm a community member and a mother of two children who have been through the system since kindergarten. And they are currently, one is currently still in the district, the other one's not. And I don't want to waste the board's time with repetition. I do, I am here for a similar purpose of wanting to get more answers around not only what we know, but what we don't know. I'm such a strong believer in staff being able to anonymously communicate what their issues are. I do believe from what I've heard, you know, I, I have to say that I've never been to a board meeting and I'm not even very involved in these work groups and that kind of thing. But since I've kind of been out as a, as a public voice in, in some of these issues, people have come to me. People who are staff members, teachers, parents, other employees, past and present. And there is a culture of, from what I understand, not being heard, not being consulted in decisions. I also know from hearing Mrs. Wyler's presentation that there's a responsibility between the board and administration that I don't fully understand. I don't know where the board, where they can step in or they can't. I, I've also, I've heard sides, points from both on both sides. And so I just really feel like there needs to be some kind of vessel for people to speak, for people who work in the district to speak out. I know that our superintendent has done a great job with communicating, I feel, through COVID, through the protests, through, I think that she does a pretty good job with parents overall. Where I'm feeling like there's a disconnect maybe is with the staff who isn't, isn't feeling heard. And so my, my, if I had my magic wand and could affect a change here, it would be that there would be an anonymous outside independent vessel for staff to be interviewed to hear both sides. Because I know that there's a lot of people who love working for the district, feel fully supported, and there's others who don't. Of course, you find that in every organization. However, the fact that some people feel so supported and others really don't in and of itself, I feel like is a problem. That this, this information gathering absolutely would have to be outside the purview of the district and maybe even the Board of Education. And again, I'm not fully aware of where these lines have been drawn. But I, I do feel like there's enough of, of, of a cause, enough evidence to cause this to happen. So thank you for listening.
Trevor Robbins.
Thank you. My name is Trevor Robbins. I was a teacher here at Manitou Springs High School. The first comment I had is I'm physically at the board meeting and I can't hear it. I'm staying out in the hall and it's really hard to hear everybody's comments. So I tried to hear some things because I really was, I had my comment on my resignation, which is on the agenda tonight. But then I wanted to listen really carefully to what other people had said. And then maybe make a comment on that too. So I can speak to the, my turnover, I can speak to my resignation. I, I've been treated very unprofessionally here over the last year and a half. And I've tried to address those concerns through policy, to read the policy, go through the procedures, address those concerns directly, even speak directly to the issues one-on-one before everything gets out in the public because I was trying to, trying to fix the problem. But that didn't work. And so then we go through the policies and procedures and, and those don't seem to work either. They apply to some people and not others. So I, for my own personal mental health and my family, I love my wife so much for being here to support me. This is amazing woman. I have to leave the school unfortunately, but I really have come to love in the last three and a half years. I've been a teacher since early 2000s and I've, I've never really experienced what I've experienced over the last year and a half. And I've tried to go through steps, you know, you guys have been listening in very polite, you know, in that, in that process. But we, we had a problem and I tried to address it correctly and it never got addressed. It just got ignored for two months. And so I had to turn in my resignation. And so I can, I can talk to the staff turnover. I know what's going on with people. And I feel really bad for what's happened here as a parent of a daughter who's got three more years here in the district and then other kids who are young. And I've taught many people's kids. I love our kids. We have fantastic kids. We have fantastic staff. My colleagues are awesome. I don't want to lose any more of them for my daughter's sake. And it's going to happen. There's going to be more if we continue this culture, what I would say is a fear of retaliation. Thank you.
No, I just want to let everyone know that I do appreciate public comments just as a whole. Just even the diverse nature of comments with differing opinions and perceptions. Manitou still polite, courteous, and respectful of each other and the staff. And I, and that, that I want to maintain. Certainly all of the comments or we'll take them under consideration. Some will be discussed in open session during work meetings, some of the topics. Some are going to be regulated to executive session because they deal with personnel issues or legal issues. And I think that is where we, just like you have all come out of COVID, we have come out of COVID. The board, if you look back at this, have continually discussed that we need to make it more transparent. I said the word, just how boards function and that relationship with the district, very important. And look at more community development and engagement. And that has been a key focus on what is the best way to do that with some people willing to engage and not engage coming out of COVID. So I thank you again for having the courage to speak, particularly people that are not used to doing that, not being in front of a board. That is very courageous because it is hard to do. So again, thank you and we're going to continue our meeting. Next on the agenda. It's the consent agenda. So can I get a motion?
Johnson, I, Owen. Sharon. Smith. Bitovich.
Can we go then?
Something consent agenda, excuse me, chair doesn't have to be unanimous. If any one person has a body consent agenda and something needs to be discussed, one, the minutes are incorrect. There's an error in the minute. So we should probably actually look at that and those are the rules on the consent agenda. Roberts book, if you don't look at that as well, but I think that was just worked with.
I don't know. Is that policy, is that policy? Okay.
So for the minutes, which are fantastic, I thought that you're on a great job.
Just have to move it to somewhere else.
So I'd make a motion to move that to under board development for further discussion. Minutes for approval and we're also moving the personnel report because I think that certainly needs to be discussed.
I have a question on that. That I think that these issues we're going to be talking about, personnel issues should have been put onto the agenda as an executive session. Because I do not feel comfortable at any point in time that we discuss that at this meeting. If you want to prolong this to another meeting, then I would accept that. But I am nowhere near, we're gonna, will I sit through a meeting and talk about that this evening? Because that is totally inappropriate. And if we look at some of the things that came through, even as far as the survey, right here, it says, I have no confidence in the board because we get into personal items. And I'm just stating what was stated to us, but I will not partake in it.
So, so the point from the discussion is not to talk about individuals because I certainly would be something executive session. We would not want to violate that. I think the point that we've heard from probably at least a third, if not more of the speakers, I took notes on all of them, was more of a global perspective on what those seven educators leaving, how that can affect our district and what responsibility we have as a board. Again, going back to some of the things that we saw in the survey, what responsibility do we have to make sure that the children in this, that we are entrusted to educate in this district? And we are as a board are ultimately responsible for that. I think that should be discussed again, not individual staff members, but globally with seven, which I believe is the biggest number I can recall ever seen, even going back a few years.
So I can paraphrase, sounds like you want to talk about the issue rather than the personnel agenda. You want to talk about the issue of staff retention and staff loss.
I want to talk about losing seven teachers and the personnel resignation.
Not globally, just those specific seven?
Well, that's what we have right now.
Okay. And then the minutes?
And the minutes, there's two, well, we, we discuss this later on.
I'm just saying that, but that's what you want to discuss as well.
Correct. There's, there's one error in there and then there's one follow-up on a work session versus work session minutes, which we vote on but aren't available to the public.
We don't vote on the work session. We only vote on the regular minutes.
Because those are action items.
Well, we can discuss that. I've got documentation that we vote on that. So I need to move that someplace so we can discuss it and get that truth out.
So you're making a motion to?
Well, we can't root the consent agenda because it's not unanimous. So I make a motion that we move it to some other spot of the meeting. Wherever you is board chair field would be most effective.
That would be great.
Yes, two separate items. The, the, he is still around approval or non-approval of their hiring, not a discussion of the, why anyone is here or not there. So that is the consent pass is not a discussion of why.
So by, so the voting consensus to move the H R process along versus a bigger discussion about retention of staff. Two different things. Yes? Are we tracking each other?
I just consider what, I'm curious about what the discussion would be, how that would be different.
Well, that's for the discussion.
You know, I'll move forward to say we can discuss, and it seems to me that any consent agenda that I've ever dealt with or one item or another item, not the whole consent agenda. So if there was other things on there, so right now we're saying we don't like anything on the consent agenda.
There's two items and I'm hearing Dr. Karen say that neither of them, one, that the minutes are not correct. He made a statement that the work session process of approval was not correct. And he made a comment that the personnel wants to talk about the issues surrounding the number or correct me if I'm wrong, the number of people resigned. Okay. So that is my understanding of the three topics.
And I still do not feel comfortable talking about anything about staff. I think that is appropriate. If I was one of the ones who was resigning from this, I would like to have notification that those topics are going to be talked about. And if I wanted to be here, then I would be here because I think this thing could stem over to almost a parallel that we shouldn't be into.
I a hundred percent agree, but my understanding is that you have no intention of speaking about individuals.
Not about individuals, no. Just the, the volume of staff that are leaving at this time and it's only people. Unless nobody else is concerned about the number of staff leaving.
I just want to figure out the best way to talk to me because like that's something we talk about during board self-reflection versus approval or non-approval of personal report. It just seems like two different things.
So what I'm hearing you say is that the consent agenda is one thing to move forward versus this idea that we, you know, without doubt have talked about already. You say more discussion on it is retention of staff and what else we can do is a separate topic to be discussed. Not, you're right, not individuals.
Publish it so that people are aware and talking about it to give them an opportunity to participate. That seems to fit with the culture and climate survey results as well.
And certainly I would think it would be an ongoing discussion during a work session perhaps. Also giving people, as you said, notice to tune into that discussion as well as coming with ideas and recommendations. Just knowing did you have?
Well, what I was thinking there is that, yeah, I mean, I don't think we can talk about it enough. So I, I tend to have this.
Ongoing conversation.
Yeah, it could definitely be appropriate in culture, climate survey results. We have, you know, and I'm willing to talk about it tonight. It's also topical based on comments we've had with the public, which we want to engage in. And we have what we call a retreat, which I don't, but that's what we call.
It's just a treat then.
So we have plenty of opportunity. And so, yeah, with regard to what's appropriate from a board, I'm hoping for discussion on when that is, but I absolutely agree with this topic. So it's discussion, continue discussion. I think if we can have a full and vigorous and honest and truthful discussion about staff retention and the fact that all of these people are leaving at this time with potentially more coming, I think it is reasonable, as long as that discussion is not, is not inhibited or limited. Because I think there's evidence by many of the people here that support this topic. I think it's probably, in my opinion, that was the first thing that this board and this district has to address today. So in that case, I would.
Will you defer to a work session?
I would, I would, no, I'd like to do it. I think it was part of the culture story. Because sadly, I think we oftentimes let things slip by. So I think we need to, we have beer till nine o'clock. I think this is important. I think it's important to the teachers, that the teachers actually hear the board and understand that we care about them. Because I think for reading some of the survey results, they, they don't feel that way. And so that is sad because, because certainly, and maybe, you know, some of the actions of the board have taken, I have led them to feel that way and that's, that makes me disappointed as a board member. So I don't want to be in that position. They need to feel supported. I want to do whatever has to happen for them to feel supported.
So let me summarize this and make a statement. The topic is going to come up during, when we speak about the survey results to an extent. Do we need to move anything or can we vote on the consent agenda and not move it? And have that discussion during the culture and climate survey for use of facilitation at the meeting?
We can take, in that case, as long as we agree to that, both announcements agree to that, that's fine. And then we can address the minute issues on accepting of Robert's rules. You can't actually go on to other stuff in the meeting until the minutes are approved. So we probably need to take the minutes out for the one, one small correction. One small correction and then one comment, but I would say that we put that directly after the consent agenda or we can do it before the consent agenda, whatever you'd like. But it has to come before anything else based on the rules.
You can, you can make the adjustments to the minutes. You can, you can make the adjustment to the minutes there as well.
So I can be pretty friendly.
A friendly.
A friendly adjustment to the minutes.
Okay, so the friendly part is the date's wrong, it's supposed to be March twenty eighth, not February twenty eighth.
The last one.
The less, the, the, the more concerning part is the work sessions, and I understand, Dr. Domain, so we don't approve work sessions, but if you look at the minutes, it says work session meetings. But they do get approved if you look at the minutes, and so I think the work sessions are incredibly valuable. The work session that we had, in March, we talked about the cost of governance, which was brought up at a regular board meeting. And never brought, never followed up with the questions at our regular meeting, was brought up at a work session, where it showed the vast majority of the board's overage and how much money there was at, or that actually sixty-three percent of that was bond PR and marketing based on data that I believe was coming back during, from SIR, from SUI. And the other issue on the work session minutes, as we talked about, the board, I'm going to use the word retreat, yes, I apologize, just the board retreats, that's what it says in the minutes. And the points that we have in there that were made by, by a couple of different board members about the importance of staff data and actually hearing the staff as a board, because in my opinion, the, the board's job is a lot of monitoring and that sort of thing. But it's trying to help make sure that the district is supplying the staff with an excellent place to educate our students, is it ER doc with a short attention span, that's it. So I think we need to have the work session minutes, if we're going to be approving them, which it appears is that we do, those are available to the general public if they want access to. If they don't want to access it, that's totally up to them, but just give them the opportunity to actually see what the board is doing and what the board members are talking about.
Yeah, and I, if I can respond, I agree, on statute, you approve the regular minutes, that's, that's just in statute. However, the work session minutes are posted so that we never lose that archive opportunity to see it. The reason, just for the public, they're posted in administration so that it doesn't get confused about what's being approved and not being approved. I have been thinking about it, I think that work, work session minutes need to go in a separate spot. You can create like board, board materials that are not in the minutes or in that meeting. So really making sure it's almost like documents or communications with the board, so they can go there and so they can be seen. And I actually had this thought over the weekend, I would never want to do anything like that, because if we go in, it shows that it was moved. And so we would need board approval to go back and take out all of the work sessions, since we've been using board docs. We can take all of those out and archive them into a place where those could go. So I think actually I'd like to go back to the beginning of board docs, because they are, that's where the rich discussions are, we just didn't want those to be seemingly approved.
What are the implications of that, is that just make it more, is make it more transparent, easier for people to find, what does that do?
Yes, and we can always do that moving forward.
Okay.
Because of the minutes that we are looking to approve, on, at the bottom of page one includes work session minutes, March seventeen, twenty twenty-two, so thirty thousand applied unanimously. We voted to approve that consent agenda that included the work session minutes, so we just have to make sure that we're speaking accurately. We want to make, in my opinion, as a board member, we want to make as much information available to people as they have a desire to see. Because actually, the taxpayers are the people that fund this entire enterprise, and they should be available, as should parents and staff members, be able to see what the board is doing. And that might clear up some of the confusion about what the board is doing that comes up in the survey.
Yeah, I would raise clearly to everyone, this is not, this is just procedural and it's opportunity, I think, I'm thankful that the board years ago wanted to move to an investment board docs where this was clear, apparent, an investment. But yeah, as we come through different structural procedural aspects, I think there's ways for us to have what's available. If you go back to two minutes from yours or presentation, you can't find them, so I think that, that would be a recommendation. But Kendall and I would not do that without board approval, so, because it will show that the board, that it has been moved. But basically, what we could also do is just make a copy, take all the copies of the work sessions, so nothing has changed, and we just post all of those into board docs as a separate sort of board material, so that's probably honestly, as I'm talking, probably a cleaner way for that to happen.
That sounds like a procedural thing we can, we can work on, so, but I think Kendall's done an excellent job in the minutes, that's more of a, procedurally more of a district thing rather than a board secretary issue. So nothing to do with Kendall.
We still have the motion on the floor, the jet made. With the minutes and personal reports for development.
Thank you, that was the next thing I was going to ask, however, we've also talked about two other courses of action at that point, so if we have a motion and nobody has seconded, it can just die, and then we can move on to other options.
I could just withdraw the motion to move the personnel report from the consent agenda.
There's also an option.
Probably faster. More efficient.
Or we can just send you the three minute wait. Okay, so where do we want to go, moving personnel reports or something?
But approving the minutes or no?
We're, we're leaving personnel in the consent agenda, and we'll approve that, and then the minutes are with the incredibly friendly amendment that simply changed the date with the discussion about how we make sure that any can access work minutes.
And so with a four to one vote, consent and the item passes.
And they have this consent, which would be five to zero, so you have to go on it again.
Yes.
Yeah, this consent. So move. Also.
Okay, Johnsons, Moens, Sharon, Smith.
Bit of a. Hi, and just so the public knows, and you and public, usually work sessions are where we get into a lot more dialogue, and usually we vote, but we're having a fun evening tonight, so I'm glad you tuned in. This will give you a lot more education about what the board does and the dialogue and how we interact, and I think that is important for the public. I've had many years of board as the teacher and administrator end of it, on this end of it. So it is, it's always an educational experience, I'm glad we have an expert in our Robert's rules with us. So let's take a look at our DAX subcommittee that we're excited about, hearing our end of the year reports.
Yes, we're going to start with capital improvement with Sierra Dunlap, a student at Manitou Springs High School. There are other members of committee here as well. Hi, my name is Sierra Dunlap, I'm a student at Manitou Springs High School. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the Capital Improvement Subcommittee of the District Accountability Committee. So who's a part of the DAK, the Capital Improvement Committee with me? We have Moira Archuleta, Stuart Cross, Amy Tran, Louisa Dick, and Natalie Johnson. And what's our topic? Well, the Capital Improvement Committee has been brainstorming ideas for renovating the upper activity field that's located above Manitou Springs Middle School. And also address safety needs and multipurpose spaces for community and student use that are also ADA compliant. So when, what's our timeline? Well, the bond did not pass in November twenty twenty-one, so that led us to meet with the Manitou Springs Middle School staff in January. And we met with them to discuss the future of the middle school in terms of capital improvement. And then our subcommittee developed a timeline that was possible for the lease slash purchase of the best grant options. So the Capital Improvement Committee then met with Manitou Springs Middle School's committee council representatives, students in April to discuss and gather ideas from a student's perspective of what they'd like to see in a renovation in the future of that upper activity space. So how, what's our process? Well, we met with the Manitou Springs Middle School staff to discuss capital improvement options, and we sent out a survey asking the staff if they prefer to keep the Manitou, Manitou Middle School at its current location or move it up to the Silk Building. And out of those who responded, almost sixty percent said that they'd rather keep it down at the current middle school space. And then on April fifth, we had met with those middle school students to further collect data in terms of needs and wants of those students, so gather their ideas on what they'd like to see. And then we also want to reach out to the community after the update on the best grant to determine more options as well. So what's our proposal? Well, we want to create a capital improvement advisory group to work towards a potential bond plan for November of twenty twenty-three. We also want to prioritize funding for renovating the upper activity field, and we also want to provide opportunities for committee feedback. So what's the story, what's the situation? Since the bond didn't pass, that led us to want to better address the opportunities through the COP, addressing such facility needs, and also come up with a solution that supports our school in terms of improvements. So after meeting with the middle school staff, it was determined that selecting the upper activity field was a great jumping off point for enhancing the middle school campus prior to significant building renovations, and that would also be important and aligned with the master plan as well. So this also allows students to have an appropriate space during the school day, and also allows more community engagement as well with the students, as well as after school usage during the summer, the holidays, breaks, weekends, stuff like that. So what are our interests? We want to have ADA accessible spaces, multipurpose spaces for community and students, and that also aligns with the master facility plan and an action step despite the bond not passing. So what's our research? Well, we had conducted a survey from the Manitou Middle School staff, like I stated before, and this little pie chart shows that almost sixty percent said that they'd prefer the, the location of the middle school stays where it's at. And then student input was also collected from middle school students, and those images are below, so these are just some middle school representatives that we worked with. And they were just brainstorming ideas, we printed out pictures for them to copy and paste onto this little blueprint of the upper activity field space as well. And so they had a lot of fun working with that, so here are kind of the, the plans that they came up with. Some really popular options were a geodesic dome, large turf space, age-appropriate climbing structures, sport courts. And they also wanted to connect that upper activity field with the trails more, which is awesome. And then also a really fun idea was to have a zip line, I would love that, but.
This is like with insurance, Suzie's not here. I have foreign errors.
And also keeping the Gaga pit, that was a popular option as well. So what's our criteria, pros and cons? So some pros are we're not sitting idle, we're going to be proactive, but it also creates an opportunity for parent and community involvement. Trail system renovation, it can link more to programs like the Manitou Mountain Bike Team, and just link more to the community in general to have those public trails linked to an awesome public space that'd be usable for everybody. That leads to the next thing is multi-use and intergenerational community space, so it just really brings the community together and allows people to collaborate. It allows more opportunities to students, for students to collaborate with the community as well. And then we also have acting on student and staff voice, so taking opinions and actually putting them into play. And also responding to the needs of the outlined in master facility planning. And some cons, there is some funding limitations, and we still have other capital improvement needs as well. And so what are some suggested implementation models? The Capital Improvement Subcommittee created a timeline for a potential lease and purchase with the best grant. Yes, that's it. And so this little timeline just shows, since the COP was passed by the board, we have to wait until June to see what the outcome of the best grant is. And if we get the best grant, then we can, can continue with the upper activity field renovations. If it doesn't pass, then unfortunately we'll have to look for other funding. But either way, our timeline ends in a bond in November twenty twenty-three. And then just back to that last page. We also researched age-appropriate place spaces as well, so just to research some more about what we want to do for that renovation of the upper activity field. And some additional notes, the outstanding debt, a commitment to community to pay off the COP, and also the timeline and follow through, so. I think that's it.
I am curious, but I won't take some for going a bit long this evening, curious about age appropriate, so six, seven, eight grade place spaces. But what is going to come out of that committee, I'm sure it's going to be beautiful and functional. Next group.
Yes, we have a sounding compensation, it's Linda Strickland and Marcia Linder.
I'm Linda Strickland, this is Marcia. We were tasked with evaluating compensation of benefits for all district staff so that we can retain highly qualified staff at all levels with a fair employment package, including wages and benefits. This is an ongoing process, it's not just this year. Go on, each year, we pick a specific area of concern that we would like to address. We continue to work as a subcommittee under the DAK. This year, we looked at how we might compare to private sector positions as well, because our emphasis goes on our classified staff. So our proposal is to adjust specific classified employee wages, hourly wages to close gaps, and align with market demand, both in the private and public sectors, and to retain highly qualified staff. We'd like to provide overall percentage increase to district staff and to look at, continue to look at opportunities to adjust wages in the future. We're looking at certified lane movement, movement based on master level transcripts, what that means is many people have taken masters levels credits that they haven't paid to the masters course. Even though they went through the same course, they didn't pay to get the credit hours, but they did the same work. So maybe we should look at including those kinds of transcripts in a compensation package. And classified education and prior qualifications, we're doing more of a deep dig into classified staff and what their qualifications might be versus the position that they're in. If people have bachelor's or master's degrees and they're working as a classified staff person, does that impact where they would be within our wage range, with that position? The story, cost of living increases substantially impacted our ability to provide livable wage. With the current climate created by the pandemic and how this has impacted students and families with learning loss and social emotional challenges, responsibility of classified staff to tackle these challenges have only increased. Recruiting, recruiting classified staff is increasingly competitive, not just between school districts, but also between us and private sector jobs. You've seen everyone saying, we're, we're hiring seventeen ninety-nine, eighteen ninety-nine an hour. Classified staff, staff make up fifty percent of the jobs in our district and are arguably the backbone. Our educators and nutrition service provide the most direct services to our student body, feeding and working with our students all day, every day. It's important to pay them reasonable wages in order to recruit and retain these valuable members for our staff. It's a small way to honor their dedication to students that's been paramount to the success of the district. This will allow us to show how much we value them. What are the needs or concerns or desires for this underlying issue? Equity, the need for livable wages, retention of classified staff, consistency in hiring and compensation packages, every watering and honoring.
So the research that we conducted on our subcommittee was really not just comparing our classified positions to other districts in the Pike's Peak region, but trying to find like jobs to the positions that we hold. So we compared like paraprofessionals to daycare workers, buildings and grounds to other maintenance jobs, food service workers to like positions in the private sector. While we're never going to be able to compete with that, we're trying to close that gap. I have people that we hire that don't show up. So we're trying to not only hire, but have people show up, want to be here and be able to retain them at a reasonable wage that they can afford to pay their bills. We have, like Linda said, fifty percent of our staff fall in that classified range, so that's several different categories, our maintenance, buildings and ground staff, our paraprofessional educators, our administrative assistants, everyone in the business office. Let's see, food service workers, our bus drivers, so about half of our staff and our, and our technology department as well. A lot of those subgroups have, over the years, been corrected to kind of meet market demand. So we evaluated each subgroup independently, and Suzie and I kind of plotted each of those subgroups. Some of those subgroups are really where they needed to be, some of them were not. So after that, that research, we found that thirty-six folks in our classified staff really needed some adjustment. So of those thirty-six folks, our recommendation as a subcommittee was that option number one, to correct those folks and close those gaps.
close those gaps and the tune of about forty-five thousand dollars. Suzie, as the CFO, was comfortable with that number and that is something that she was comfortable presenting to our subcommittee to present to you. Our option two was to cut that number in half at almost twenty-three thousand dollars. So the criteria was, you know, to really show that we were looking at folks based on what we knew was their level of education. We're definitely, with our current hiring practices, we're looking at that. We're looking at like experience when we bring people in so that we can honor what they're coming with when they choose to join us and closing those gaps when we bring them in so that we don't have them going into the future. Our, our process for the future is to really individually dig into HR folders for folks that have been here for a while and, and really make sure that we are honoring what they're bringing to the table because I can't speak to how they were hired, you know, prior. And make sure that they're being paid for what they, what they really, what they really have. So that will be continual analysis. So that's the recommendation of the subcommittee for twenty-two, twenty-three is that option one. And then that, the additional whatever our CFO brings to you all in May for a proposed percentage increase. We also, as a subcommittee, ran it through the salary compensation for those S R three funds. And it was nice because they also were in agreement with the little subcommittee that Suzie and I brought together on those S R three retention funds. So that was a nice way to honor certified and classified staff equally. And not only the certified and classified staff, but the DAC subcommittee shared the idea of honoring the six long-term subs that have worked daily in our buildings for the last two years. So that is our recommendation.
Thank you. I'm going to guess when you did that research and background because we probably switched our data software where you had to go back and track some interesting records. Yes?
I guess we did.
I was going to say, it's quite laborious work, thank you.
But it's actually something I do regularly as part of my, my work is track.
Track, yeah. Track and more tracking. All right.
Now we have Natasha Leonardo. She's on the feedback and evaluation.
Natasha Leonardo speaking on behalf of our feedback evaluation committee. We have a very large group. It's just a mix of certified, classified students, parents. So we actually split our group into two this time. We had a group focused on classifieds and a group focused on certified. And what we specifically focused on was the evaluation tool for any ways to grow teachers and classified job roles. So first with our certified rubric, we really looked deep into it. And standard five was one that was previously there that we've taken and took the wording and implemented it throughout the other four standards. And along with that, kind of changed the wage distribution across those four standards. With the classified rubric, we went in and really changed the wording so that it was more of a positive feedback for those workers and that it was more able to be used across the board and more to their jobs. So I kind of talked about our, how our big, each group did examine the rubrics, we made recommendations, and then we got feedback by sending out the rubrics once we had adapted them to all administration, all department heads, and then also to all certified and classified staff with a video of somebody explaining the changes and then gathering kind of some feedback through a Google form with that. So the story behind it is that our committee addressed kind of that different weighting throughout it and just making sure that there's more equity across all four standards. We also really shifted from it being strictly evaluative to create it to be more collaborative. So we're really wanting a tool that will allow for more dialogue and growth for both the employees and the evaluators because a lot of times you'll see words like many or several and to really have them have a discussion with one another on what that means. We also are really wanting to establish a buy-in and understanding from leadership to the support, to support the professional developments through kind of that continuous growth process. So turning it into a big dialogue. Our big interest is to reframe the feedback evaluation process to really continue that mindset shift here in the district to it being growing versus the I got to and really trying to grow everybody in our development. We're also wanting to still have that integration alignment of state, district, and school level evaluation schools as well. So our big proposal is that we are recommending two new modified certified rubrics, one for classified and one for certified. They are linked, but they're. And just really noticing that there's some different change in the wording as far as supporting for the growth. And our subcommittee really recommends that each school department sets aside a specific facilitated time to really engage in a collaborative conversation each time, the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year so that both ends are feeling supported and that there is a growth and a goal of where they want to go to towards the end. So a big thing that we're thinking for the beginning of the school year, we're all the way down the suggestion. And when in August, really kind of start this with the staff is to set aside that time and really deliver it in a way that it is a professional growth tool so that there is kind of that situated mindset for all the certified and classified staff with new improvements within the rubrics.
Natasha, thinking about that and when you said some processes that you talked about that aren't delineated, will there be a handbook or kind of a guidance document that goes with that? When you talk about that you want it to be face-to-face and more collaborative, will that be a kind of a statement, overarching statement to it? How do you, how does?
Yeah, that was in that we talked about really trying to train department heads and leadership and how they deliberate to their staff. And we talked about how that training needs to definitely be implemented right away so that it is a growth tool that everybody understands those processes.
Goal setting associated with.
Exactly.
And using that within the goal, the self-evaluation about it as well. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to all the members of the DAC. We are in our third year of this structure and this format where there are twenty-five individual students, staff, and parents. We have nine members who've served for three years and just remarkable their dedication. They've done a lot of great work over the years. I'm super proud of just working with them. This is a conduit between the board and the community. And I'm really thankful for, for the work that they do. We problem solve and we talk about a lot of hard things often times. And we're going to continue to do that, have that great work. And I think this is a great opportunity in light of some of, some of the work that we have ahead. Important charge question coming from the DAC. And so they are great. I just love for us to give them a round of applause for their care.
And then I always wonder with the DAC, is, you know, is there maybe suggestions from your committee for charge questions for next year to either extend your work or, right? Because sometimes things don't just end, right? And what is the follow-up? And so that might be really beneficial from us to hear from each of the DAC committees. What like might, might be the next charge question that you'd recommend? And then what might be the follow-up that we need for this? So just if you could please, I would love that. I'd do not put more work on your plates, but I think it would be beneficial for the continuity of it. I think we've asked for.
I was going to ask, how do people get on the DAC? Is that a blanket or is it voted on or is it?
It's a point. It's, 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 when I first started, because it wasn't, it didn't exist in this format. And I didn't know a lot of people, so I had each of the principals recommend folks. And so a lot of those initial folks who are coming off those were recommended by the principals. Now it's individuals reach out, say, hey, I would like to be on it. Or others might recommend somebody from their school or department. We try to have a balance of the licensed and certified, licensed and classified individuals from each school, some from different departments. We try to have a variety of newcomers to the school district folks who have been here. And then we also have administrators from elementary and secondary levels to make sure we have an assistive tool. Marsha Palmer always serves and she always serves on the feedback and evaluation because of our requirements in that way. So that's, that's how it happens. So if people are interested, they can reach out to me and then we, we sit down and get that. And Natalie's a good component of that to make sure we have a balanced DAC and then also. Yeah, just people being interested, knowing it's a three-year commitment because it's a big deal.
And it's the continuity of the work.
The continuity of work and each year a third cycle off, so.
I've had a request for a bio break. So if we can take it until seven o'clock, you're not, you don't have to rejoin us. And the conversation and connections happen as well as bio breaks, all important things to a good meeting. Let's jump back in with late start Wednesday recommendations.
Sure. Thanks. I know that late starts, we are now in our, I think about four more remaining for this school year. And we started some late, late starts and no school on Wednesdays last year in COVID. And made the decision this year to continue. Said we'd take this year to really assess the benefits, the return investment here. As we know, it's two hours a week that our children are not with important staff who do amazing work each and every day. So I just want to share with you some considerations and some of the work that the DAC has engaged with is this conversation of, you know, do we keep them? Do we leave? Do we leave them? Do we change, switch a day? A lot of different questions. I just want to kind of run through. I'm happy to answer any questions that we, that come up. So what is the impact to staff? We learned a lot along the way. We talked about that. In fact, the students, parents. Do we do a late start or early release or do we do that on my basis? So those are a lot of the different decision-making processes that we went through and just a lot of just feedback with people just talking. So impact the staff, what's the better day? And I think that people have different views on which day, that's Chris's. Alright, so, so we just had a lot of robust discussions and especially as it started this school year, we know that for staff and for, for parents and for students, different viewpoints on that. Saw improvements across the school year with implementation. When we first started, we had PLC and TSS on the same day. And we quickly learned from staff that that was a lot for staff to have to change two significant meetings. Not only preparation, just the.
Mindset.
The mindset and the goal and the. So when we started the fall, spring semester, we switched to just one focus of those Wednesday or Wednesdays. And the staff gave feedback that focus helped a lot. And I'll just be honest with you, some said, some said better on Mondays, some said better on Wednesdays. And then there was just a strong feedback for the middle of the week regarding with colleagues that the week has already started. So that, that allows for the week to begin. It is not a frantic Monday, but the week is. Then if we look at students, of course, we know structural time loss and secondary students had a strong preference for Wednesdays. We would ask students, Mondays or Wednesdays, they consistently said Wednesdays were better for a lot of different reasons. And some of those being students just having an opportunity to do some work in the middle of the week. And/or some of our students are highly engaged in a lot of extracurricular activities. So just to have the, the, those Wednesdays there. Of course, we know impact of parents and they're considering the impact of instructional time loss for their children. And some express concern about Wednesdays for elementary age children, just around that being a bit of a bump in the week. And then many express support to staff that they're trying to collaborate. So I think that it's just different viewpoints. I think the majority of parents understand the value. However, there's just concerns about the impact to, to learning for the students. So when we think about, the question came up, why can't we do late, early release? We do not have two plus splits that would allow us to have late release because of, there's also after school release that happened each night. And then Mondays and Wednesdays, we looked at pros versus cons in the April DAC meeting. There was more support for Wednesdays versus Mondays. It still wasn't a tremendous gap, but there was more support for Wednesdays. So, you know, I just, I just share that my recommendation, and I know this is a one that we take very seriously and there are going to be folks who are fully in support and that some, they tremendously impacted. The value added for our staff to have this time to collaborate, to spend time with each other, to do some things that they otherwise would not have time to do, we believe is invaluable and for them professionally and just globally. So when we're talking about retaining staff, we're talking about the amount of work and effort that goes into preparing high-quality teaching learning, the feedback from our staff, especially once we, we got to a focus where there was just one type of meeting. But that was tremendous for them. Not only that, it allowed our buildings and grounds folks to collaborate, allowed transportation to have professional development that they otherwise would not. We are going to continue to provide morning opportunities for those families. However, we see that as an opportunity for growth. We had more students than we expected for elementary school to need this, this time and this opportunity. But we see an opportunity for some of our community partners like Flying Free Farm. One of our great teachers is going to be working and working with us at Flying Free Farm. And so those are some ways and he's led a lot of that work. It was really unexpected amongst parents who would want students to utilize those resources. But we believe it's important that that will not go away. And then what will happen, of course, the things that we've been working on. And then just aligned to the schools and the departments' action plans. So whether that be arts integration, environmental education, if you pass elementary school, student staff wellness. But I think one of the things that we really learned through this year was that a balance between PLC, professional learnings, learning communities, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, and then PBs. So we, we learned that folks wanted a little bit more time with PLCs, some time, of course, within CSS cycles. Those need to be every six weeks and then also more professional development. So just having that balanced approach allows schools to make decisions that are specific to their needs based on their point. So really articulating that out. When it comes out to be ten in the first semester and eleven in the second semester, the value added for staff to have it is just invaluable, especially when we look at salary and compensation. We would love to pay folks more, but we're just not there as a state right now. And so we need to do a lot more of work in that area. So our recommendation is that this be the calendar that changes for next school year. If you have any questions.
So one of those, you know, we kind of heard a little like about, I guess I like it, how many parents really are, do you hear from that?
I'd say, I don't know if it's a problem, but I think it's a bigger strain on elementary parents. And so I hear more from some elementary parents. Percentage-wise, I don't have. But I would say that it takes a bigger impact on some of that.
Brain because of childcare.
There's no childcare or over child at home.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think we can do a better job of, of explaining and explain the impact of how, what opportunities it does then provide staff to provide rich and robust learning experiences. And I think we can, we can continue to do that better, not to say that.
Do you think we could provide enough programming for, for students in that situation so that they still come same time? They're just getting unique opportunities during that period of time for growth as you've already outlined here to, to address those parents who are having issues? Do you think we have the capacity to do that or are we looking at budget restraints there or?
So like right now, it's not, there's no budget really. We have been working with our, our teams stepping in and it's subs, long-term subs who've been there. So if we were going to do something like that, we'd need to increase the budget. However, we, we think there might be some opportunities for, for parent volunteers as well to boost that. We know our parents want us to support in ways and if it were one, one Wednesday a month for a small group of parents, we could do some, so great.
That might be some.
Yeah, group program, programming.
Yeah, the outreach that we were talking about, it could connect with these kinds of things. There are solutions for problems when we work together and I think pull from a multitude of resources. And we have that family that is our, that might be able to serve. And we have that family that is our, that might be able to serve with that piece, which would be outstanding in a way.
Especially if scheduled ahead, you have a purpose for them, right? Everybody wants to go as a bunch of gardeners that they don't have an activity for anymore. I would, they scare me.
Yeah, in the beginning, many of the elementary teachers, I believe, I'm, I'm looking around. I think initially spot Mondays for a stronger day and then moved that week to Wednesdays. And I'm looking at some folks who are nodding because that was a surprise to me. And so I support what the teachers believe is the best for them. And I, I think what we have is an opportunity on those late start Wednesdays. We don't have to cram everything that we always did. We can think about really creative ways to do that. So I know like kindergarten last week, they did something with their teddy bears, teddy bear lesson. And so they adjusted the whole schedule so that they didn't try to fit every, everything exactly maybe as, as it was. So lots of different ways that we can continue, but that was feedback directly from staff to move, to keep it on this.
Tom's just got feedback. Was that just a kind of word of mouth thing? Or is it from the DAC or talk about or principals or how did that feedback?
Yeah, so, so in our couple of different DAC meetings where we bring it up, I'd say, you know, just get feedback from your, your team. Talk about it, what's pluses and deltas of each. And I think, I think just general conversations that they had. And then the last, the last DAC meeting, we did a consensus, a straw poll. And just to see how that went, Chris was the last person to vote. So that's how we, we got that feedback. Students, high school students brought it to the student council. And he had all the tallies for, for that. So that's how we got that feedback. I think I've seen a couple of other districts having the same dialogue. When they put out these types of surveys, sometimes it goes fifty to fifty. So it's not like a strong Monday, Wednesday, either or. But what's best for what you've tried already. It seems that Wednesdays allow for the week to get started, some planning, adjusting, and then they can finish strong with that. Psychologically, it seems to be a place where, especially once we focus to just one type of meeting.
I'm thinking, so as a teacher, Wednesday then becomes compressed for me. Does it change my teaching, my lesson cycle? What does that look like?
Yes.
Yes, just yes, okay.
Yeah, so like, middle school changes the bell schedule.
For AB days.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm thinking. So they give an AB and then condensed day and then another AB day. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
And middle school has a totally different schedule on their, their Wednesdays.
How does Wednesday work for you?
You.
No, I was actually asking your teacher.
Sorry, that's fire in principle.
It's a block schedule. So we have a seven period day typically. And we run three of those periods for eighty minutes on Wednesday. And we run four of them for eighty minutes on Thursday. And then, so that leaves us with a small gap of time at the end of Wednesday. Whereas, so we get to do an advisory and it leaves us with a slightly larger gap of time on Thursday where we do our enrichment programs. So clubs, knitting, Legos.
Enriching our children.
Thank you.
One day that's on here, we learned the hard way this year for high school, that it did not work well for them to have a late start Wednesday, the week of finals. So we took that off.
That would make sense.
That was not a good idea. And then also we had to, oh, sorry, one of these dates in. Is that right? Sorry, one of these in, I can't see my eyes. The, the April one needs to come up because that's most likely the.
Mass.
Yes. So it still ends up being eleven.
So it basically adds up to six days of the students, six total days, you know, if you do forty-two hours. It's about seven hours a day of the students stopping with teachers. And the thought is that that's certainly worth the return on the investment for the teachers. It helps them be more productive, healthier and happier. Okay. Excellent.
Yeah.
On a Christmas shirt.
Two thumbs up for me.
We talked about the theme of can we just do longer days? Well, when you do a day, you have to add it somewhere on plus from the backend. So we don't think that's possible. For example, the high school tomorrow is doing some really neat work around safety. And they're, they're being creative with their.
Yeah, I mean, teachers need that collaborative time. They'll get their schedule, not an additional.
We'll all sprint office, folks, registers, everybody's got time together. So I can just tell you, I think this, it's a word of process. I think this is a big win in the morale area for staff. And knowing that we are the only district that would have it on Wednesdays. There are, there are others that.
The other days.
Two other days, but I think it would be a big, big deal. So necessarily action that needs to be taken because the calendar still stays the same. However, if you'd like to, to move that to a May meeting for action. I know I told the, the parents and staff and students, we would make a final decision in May so they could go on to somewhere. Hold that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Awesome. Good. Culture and climate, there's a whole lot. Already kind of decided it'll be probably a two chunk discussion. You know, I've got my freak out some highlights, but I think, you know, maybe a balcony view.
And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. So my first year, that was nineteen twenty, we did the first climate survey in. No, last year was first year, I was just gonna say, third year. Last year we did it in Google and Google forums. This year we're using Survey Monkey. And so because of that, they were in two different databases. We needed to collapse those. So I, I just want to answer a question that we hired someone externally to collapse that data. We didn't want any questions about that. So hired a third party, part of data specialist. Does this for a living? He's collapsed those. At this point, because the survey just closed a week and a half or so ago. He's only gotten to the staff, staff surveys. I would say that he's, he's close to finishing students and parents. So we'll have that for the May meeting. And we can even probably most likely have it for the May work session. I'll go through these. I won't. Discuss, discuss. Kind of run through these. This is participation rates. I don't think, you can make some references why, why participation rates changed where staff. On participation rates by school. We didn't have this data for last year. So after this, after this, we'll have it year over year. So this, for parents, excuse me. Just want to let you know, we aligned these outcomes to our leverage points in the action plan. It's the first time that the actual plan includes these kind of metrics that you can see here over here. So it's kind of small there. Thanks, Scott. So in this one, transparency is important to our school district. There's that overall increase there. I'm afforded ample time to collaborate with my colleagues. Interesting, the threes and four and five stayed the same. But it's interesting that five has increased pretty significantly, which is positive. But generally, threes, fours and fives didn't increase. Teachers and staff discussing special strategies and free floor planning, it's also increased. You might be wondering, why does it work different? And I'm going to say this to the public as well. It had an NA category and that was feedback from last year's survey. That there were some of these items that did not relate to all, all staff. So we did have to manually input this data. The data person is, for these where there's an NA, we want it to be comparable. He is fixing that so that in final reports show, will show that. So this is also a significant increase over last year. My school promotes academic success for all. Increase there. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah. I am now on number, I just did number seven.
Okay.
Sorry. Staff at my school have high expectations for student achievement, student learning. I receive consistent and vocal feedback for continuous growth. I have a clear understanding of how my performance is measured. Okay, now on eleven. I'm afforded ample time. We've already kind of talked about that one. Twelve. Teachers at my staff, teachers, my staff discuss instructions, strategies, how this aligns to leverage five. My development is important to the district. Is there? At this school, parents frequently volunteer to help special projects. I think you'll see in some of the parent feedback, that's just been hard for them to be in the building. So that's been a challenge, but we're excited about them being back in the building. And then, let me just come back here. So the, in the May meeting, what I can do is add the same type of data for students and parents. Because in our action, action plan, we have these key leverage points. But there are some data points that are not here. But I just wanted to kind of, to Tina's point, give the initial overarching. And this, our, our leadership team now has the data. We haven't looked at it as a group yet. And then after that, they'll share it with their staff. This will be used for action planning. And our best hope and our intention is that this action planning is really listening to what, what is in the outcomes here. Then just time with our staff. So that's where we are right now with this, this data sample. And I know that you all, the board, has access to the qualitative results. That in previous years, we have not shared publicly, but wanted to just give you the raw data and we can come up with things as well.
So just want to be clear. So what we have right now in our administrative content, we're not getting any additional testing information. We'll continue looking at analyzing this. So as in May, you'll be getting more of this kind of data in a visualization that you'll be presenting in May.
In May, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear.
So I think it'd be really helpful. So it looks like out of the, I think it's on the second, on the second page, participation rates. It looks like the largest increase was in the staff column at nineteen point one percent or thereabouts. So it's a absolute of fourteen percent when you actually map it's nineteen point one percent. Is there, is one, for one, do we know why, as we're talking about obviously staff attrition? And then two, what, what's in the staff bucket? Because I don't, I guess maybe I don't understand, if staff just teachers or staff, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, custodian, nutrition services, building and ground, just staff? Everybody that gets a paycheck from the district.
Staff is everybody, yes.
So would it not be, so in my opinion, I won't ask that question. I'll just state my opinion. So that would be much more helpful, especially with the group stuff that aligns with our, our action plan for twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Actually have teachers broken out, maybe not break out their comments, because I don't want to have it be, because one of my big concerns I heard from teachers was, it's got to be anonymous or concerned it's not anonymous. So I don't want to break out, I don't think it's necessary to break out the comments of the staff. Because most of those, you can kind of figure it out anyway, if it's a teacher or a non-teacher. But as far as the numbers, I think that'd be helpful because the question is that we're going to be making decisions based on data. We want to make sure the data actually reflects reality. And if we have, you know, such a small number of teachers that responded, then we probably need to figure out another way. To my colleague Gary's points about his like for surveys. Maybe we need a different way to do it if this is not getting us actionable data. Because you don't want to, I wouldn't want us to take action on data that's not, doesn't act or reflect what the staff, what the teaching staff in this specific question are going through. Since they're kind of our, in my opinion, our focus today. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I know we dissected that a few last week. I just want to make sure that.
So did they identify for the survey by staff? Okay, there is no way to do it on that, this particular.
It just goes by school. And I have to tell you, I think my, my recommendation for our, our own roles and responsibilities is, I think that because last year was the first year and we, we, we did a good job at that. I think now we have this in Survey Monkey and it has to be collapsed. My recommendation to the board is that this is outsourced by K-12 Insights. And that they take these data samples and we pay a company to do this. And that is an extra probably five to seven thousand dollars. But there is a lot, there are a lot of analytics that if we're outsourcing someone to collapse data, to run data, to be neutral. For our own, you know, that is very important. And I, I, I just, we don't have to make that decision right now. But if K-12 Insights, five to seven thousand dollars.
So their reason we haven't invested is not aligned the teaching to CDE, teaching and learning conditions of the survey.
Well, one of the reasons is that it excludes portions of, of the, of our staff. And so really when we talk about culture and climate, it's all, it's all staff.
But this does dig deeply into teachers. And I'm just saying, it's a consideration. It does give some excellent data. So just a thought, yeah.
Does that mean twelve insights, right? Write the questions and conduct the survey as well.
Yeah, they do. They, they, well, we, we can give them like their items. So we have year over year. And, and then if we wanted to, to enhance that as well.
Just crafting questions is an art form in and of itself. And so it's like every word matters. And we saw some of that on the evaluations. I think outsourcing piece would also lend itself to concerns about anonymity. So just throwing that out there.
I agree. I don't, we don't, we don't like this part of, I mean, I, I am a data person and I like it to, either I'm running the data and, and this is, this is important. And we want to make sure that it's, it's accurate and it's right. I think I also heard people say, I'm happy, so I didn't fill out the survey. I heard a lot of people say, I don't, I'm happy with my job, so I didn't fill out the survey.
I should have filled out the survey.
But again, you said, hey, look at this. Say, we're talking about how many people actually filled it out. If they were, whatever. And I think the best way for anonymity is to have the whole staff. Because nobody really knows. You start breaking it down to smaller portions. But even if we spend five to seven thousand dollars putting this out, I would say this, you could try it one year. And if our numbers still are coming back at this percentage of people filling these things out, then we're looking.
We give.
We're going down the wrong road.
We say like, take, I see, this has been going like this, yes.
Well, there, it was open for a week, I think, wasn't it? A week, like seven, eight days?
No, 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 but I mean, time like, it's late start Wednesday, everybody go spend forty-five minutes taking it.
No, we just, we just said autonomously when they want, when they're in the right mindset to do it. This is actually a good participation rate. This is not a poor participation rate. I think to Gary's point, I think if you start teasing it out too much, then people in the staff feel undervalued. And they don't feel like, well, wait a second, does that, that group of teachers versus special service providers matter more or less? We have very few special service providers. If you start teasing that out, your N is so small that it's now skewed. And they may not feel comfortable to answer. So we have to be very careful about, is it licensed and classified? Or is it teachers and special service providers? So, so there's a lot of different dynamics, but a research group can really make sure what we're diving into is not going to compromise the validity of the outcomes. And we are a small data sample. That's, that's just the bottom line. We're not large. And then if you even think about kindergarten teachers, we have five, four kindergarten teachers. So that's a small data sample that really could skew data. So that is.
I look at it as, you know, what I do. If I don't have, if they just limit it to my job, it takes Rick, who works in the lab, to make my job work. It makes this person over here. So if we didn't have bus drivers, we didn't have the secretarial staff, we didn't have the counselors, we didn't have everybody else. Teachers would have no way. Because if you don't get them there and you don't keep them there. So to me, the whole staff is important. And maybe you got a few people, and I, you know, I don't think we should lose one person. People are leaving because they found a better job, they got tired of this job, they've got whatever. If they're leaving for that, I don't want to see people leave. I don't want anybody to think that's where I feel. But there's a point in time where are we looking at a small group that we have a problem with? And maybe the rest of the full two hundred and some staff are relatively happy. So that's where I'm at. I just, I just don't like those other things going on. And so that's what's bothering me at this point.
What do we have for license? So license would be, would be teachers and that.
Teachers, teachers, anyone with the required CDE license. Counselors, nurses, social workers, sites, administrators. Teachers, teachers, anyone with the required CDE license, counselors, nurses, social workers, sites, administrators, and teachers, yeah.
And the classifieds, everybody else?
Everybody, anyone who's not required to have a CDE license, or bus drivers do, but.
How many teachers are in the district, I mean, on average, obviously, it's, I'm going to change it every year, but.
Hundred and seventy.
And then the classifieds, about the same.
It's a little bit more classified.
Because I'm just concerned, again, there's the staff, all schools, I mean, trying to lump all that together, because the needs of those groups, and I agree that they're all important, but the needs of those groups are probably somewhat different besides that healthy, safe, trusting environment. But I mean, the teachers have, have different needs than, say, a bus driver, a waitress person would, and so I think it'd be, if we actually want to have data that's taxable, if we don't, if we don't really want to have data that's taxable, though, we should probably put doing surveys, except, we said we do this one, which, so we fulfill that requirement, but if we actually want real data to understand, and again, right now, it looks like we have a preponderance of the teaching staff that are leaving, and we'll see how we end up at the, at the end of the year, trying to make sure that we're meeting their needs, but the district is meeting their needs, I think should probably be our most important thing, and if we don't ask them, and can't tease out that data, not to get rid of anonymity, but, I mean, a hundred and thirty's a pretty good size number, fifty-nine percent of that, you know, that's roughly, you know, seventy or so, it'd be hard to figure out what's of those seventies that, what? And so, I, I think we probably already do need that data, because the teachers are the ones, I mean, again, it's just simple, but the teachers are the ones that teach. And so, and they're hard to replace, is my understanding, if you read the paper and quarter openings and all that sort of stuff. So I, so I think that's important, and I don't know anything about the survey that you mentioned, you obviously have much more experience with, might do, but if we have a, a survey that's put out by somebody who's supposed to be the expert in that, which would be CDE, you know, I'm saying supposed to be the expert, because I don't know, but they probably.
Any given day, or probably.
Yeah, so, so they probably have more experience, but certainly than I do. And so, doing something that's going to help the teachers feel like they have a voice, because again, that has come up over and over in conversations I've had in the last week and a half or two, is teachers having a voice. And so, fourteen percent decrease in staff, I don't know which staff, that's a fourteen, the fourteen percent, the twenty-five percent fewer administrators filled it out? And that's why the number's so low, I mean, I have no, there's no way to know. So it really makes it hard to say this data is valid or actionable without having a little more information, and that's, you know, maybe a flaw of how we did the survey, which is unfortunate, since we only do it once a year.
Well, this is the, exactly, we did it last year as well, so I, I think we replicated from last year to this year. So if we thought last, this year's not good, then last year's not good either. So I, I just want to share that that, nothing changed in this question.
But we're looking at getting more granular, but I'm hearing next year, and having it in a different format.
Now, you can ask.
K-12.
You can ask, what type of role did you have in your school, and that's, that's not hard at all to do. We can see at schools, how many people completed the survey, because we have departments like buildings, grounds, nutrition services, transportation, technology, those are all separate departments that are pulled out of the school data. And so it is possible to see how many staff answered the question of, you know, my school promotes academic success for all students. That question had an NA, and there are many people who did not answer the question, so we can see who did not, so well, the, the.
Not who, but.
We can see the number who answered NA, and said this did not apply to me, so we, we can see, and I, I, I want to say it was like a hundred and nine answered that question, I don't quote me on that, but we, we can drill down, that's the stuff that we just wanted to get this to you, because it, it took some work to combine them, and so you can see that year-over-year, but this is exactly the same data as last year. So hopefully, we thought that was good, because we got some really good feedback, because this is good data, because I think people took time to do it, and I hope that is, is valuable, I know a lot of people took advantage of that.
I think what you referenced is next steps, like, this doesn't mean it's over, so to take the data, have conversations, because if this type of data gives us a good, high-level view, and gives opportunities to look at trends, and can we improve response rates? Yeah, we can do our best, and we can look at, craft any appropriate questions, all of these things, but it's from this, then what it comes, what comes from it, and that comes back to, you know, what we talked about with regard to just open honest discourse, collaboration, how do we make this better? What are the obstacles and all that, that stems from this process? So this is one piece, in a, in an array of many, that can help us, you know, improve across the board.
Exactly.
And I agree, I think, you know, we had public comment tonight, and that's not a hundred percent representative, right? But at the same time, all comments are valid, right, in that somebody took the time to make the comment, we have to consider that. Same with the comments on, that we received on the survey, if even one person made that comment, we have to consider it. It may not drive everything you, to guess point about actionable data, but it certainly is for something for us to reflect on and consider. It is not something to be dismissed, because it is a single comment, and I think that continues to be the work of the board, is sifting that out and getting it more granular on how we do that. And so, I mean, from my, my point of thinking, I hear that everybody is a team member in our, in our particular profession, but certainly, teachers are the bulk of our population, doesn't mean they're the only value-added people, counselors, paraprofessionals, I mean, bus drivers, everybody has the potential to change children's lives and put them on the correct trajectory by far, but when we talk about the bulk of our population, I mean, so, I mean, what, what's the percentage in any one district, I think, about the, the teaching population? I mean, it's got to be forty percent, close.
One thing we can do with this data, and I'm happy to ask them to do it, is to take the percentage of folks who responded as their, their affiliations with the school versus the, the person who are affiliated with a, a department that's not a school. So that might give us a little bit different, different look, just to see how that, how that looks. So if the board thinks that's helpful, I'm happy to ask our specialists to do that now, I don't see a, a con to doing something like that. Because it wouldn't isolate enough departments to make it identifiable, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't break it out by department, we can do those too. And that would be, I would say, pretty close in terms of that, if you all think that would be okay.
And that'd be great, and the numbers aren't really identifiable, so the comments would be identifiable, so I think that'd probably be pretty safe, and this certainly aligns with, again, our action plan about, we'll recruit, retain, and develop best staff in all positions. That's, I mean, it's on the first page, so it's got to be important, and that's, you know, that's its own kind of separate survey with staff staying, and then if we can also, you know, maybe for the federal people, the G B, or the border creep, to find out where we are from a turnover stamp, I know you keep it's data from the last year to have that again, because again, that's, that's, that's actionable data, from my perspective, or leaving. And hopefully, you know, this April will be a weapon, and you will drop like a rock.
I'm just going to say though, but since we've already heard concerns about maybe staff, they can, they can show this to anonymous, and that they, you know, they're sitting there going, hey, it's not me, I, you know, nobody knows who it is, but now we're sitting here saying, let's dig a little deeper, let's dig a little deeper, what kind of perception is that, so the staff going, oh, we didn't find out what we wanted to know, so let's keep digging until we find out what it is. I'm, I'm not for that, because now we're going to defeat the whole purpose, and you're going to get less people filling it out, because they're going to go, oh, they need what they want, and so we're going to dig a little deeper until we find out who it is. That's what I'm thinking, people would say.
We'll see to staff how they want their voice to be heard, and I know we talked about that in our last board session for the border creep coming up. Bring it up again at this meeting, we should probably try how the staff want it to be heard, and do that.
Well, we can also ask the folks analyzing the data, if it is going to, to reveal some things that.
Why not?
Inadvertently, and if not, they provide, and, because, I mean, they can, they do this, right, so they can let us know if it's possible.
Well, I'm just saying, from the discussion of this meeting, from the discussion of this meeting, if I wasn't here, and I said, went, went back and reviewed it, I'd be going, wait a minute, they didn't really like what they got, so now they're going to send somebody else in to dig a little deeper, and.
I don't see the.
That's not what we're saying.
As like what we thought, but is, is there ways to get deeper information? If I'm looking at a very high level, I'm just going to go student data, because that's what I do twenty-four seven, and I'm looking at a school, and I'm looking at student data, and I look at the overall, and then I start clicking on those little buttons, so I can get more and more granular, to see who we're talking about, and it's, it's just a different lens and a different view. It's not bad or good, data isn't bad or good, that, data just tells us a story, and, you know, that adds to our continuing perspective of situations.
Well, I know that's not our intent, but I'm just saying.
Perception, perception is also a type of data.
I think that's where I feel comfortable, sort of with that recommendation, that K-12 Insights run, run, run this, and I know that you could talk about the TEL survey, but it's the year-over-year, it's aligned to our, our goals as a school district, and when we can say, these are the outcomes that we want to be able to make sure that we're monitoring, I think that this is where experts, neutral, can, can do this, and actually, that feels, that feels better, I think, for a lot of us that are, want to have good data, and want to make sure that this is, this is how this feels, but I, I, I have heard many people say, they appreciate the opportunity to have this format, especially to open the responses, I don't know if y'all want to talk about any of those tonight, or want to wait till May for that discussion? I have not summarized this.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can wait till May, I want to make sure.
I can wait.
But I'll get deep, and I mean, if you, if you feel like you've covered what you need to, or.
Yeah, because we're, we're going to circle back around, and again, I think the data's sadly less viable, and I thought it was going to be the other data point that we should have, and I know that I brought this up at several meetings, as the exit interviews, and we all saw several people bring that up, they end up public comment, that's a ready main source of data, I know that we got, I think that sometime after January twenty-first of twenty twenty-two, we got one, two, three, four, five different exit interview summaries, we've obviously had many, many more people than five would be. Well, how, how is that data being gathered, who's doing those interviews? Because that's actually valuable data on, on people that are voting with their feet, for whatever reason, but it'd be helpful to know not individuals, because we don't want to identify anybody, but are there, are there trends? Are there, we heard a couple people talk about some concerns that they had, you know, what, what do we, what do you, as a district, as administrative team, what are you learning from the exit interviews that you're doing?
I think, as you asked that question, and the rest of the board wasn't free to, to that question, I thought it'd be better to ask the board, how do y'all want to receive that information? My thinking was during the, the retreats, or in May, but I wanted to make sure that the work of the board is, is something that we all say, this is how we want, we'll.
I guess I would look at it, because, you know, how many are, say they're leaving to go somewhere else, whatever, I mean, doing, how many of them are sitting here going, go out this paper, I want an exit?
Yeah, I think Marshall Wymer is the person currently, but I can tell you that K-12 Insights on the backend of their platform can also run these, these are neutral, to their point, the, the comment tonight, I think that is a great idea. And this, we, we have a lot of different, I have a lot of good conversations with staff, I think many of them are very honest, but if there's something else that someone wants to say, I just have no problem with that. But this K-12 Insights can do that on the backside, so right now, it's done internally, and I think in that way, we have tried to maintain budgets, and I think we want to expand the possibility, so.
Well, and I'd say, you know, also, because we got on one track of, if there is our exit interviews, and there's twenty people left, and say, we see a paper that says, oh, there's two, well, there are eighteen, so, I don't need one, I don't want one, say goodbye, I'm out of here. So I, I just don't know if that's really, to me, if that's really an issue, because, you know, unless, you know, I don't think anybody's been denied an interview to say, this is why I'm leaving, I don't like it, whatever, but then you got, you know, how many, what is that percentage? If somebody's walked in there, raised their hand, and said, I want an exit.
And I think that's, you bring up a good point, it's, it's, that's extremely administrative, in terms of having access to climate surveys different, but you have access, having access to confidential exit information is extremely, I think, could be extremely problematic. And so I do think that's where K-12 Insights at the end of the year could say, we had this many who retired, we had this many who left for this reason, there are this many who wanted to stay, but they moved, and we know a lot of those people, they can't afford to live in Manito, they can't afford to live in El Paso County, so I would, in that, would be high-level summaries of, of that, and also, why they're sad to leave, that's just as important to them, I mean, these folks, there are many people that do not want to leave, and there are a lot of circumstances that require that, and I think unfortunately, that gets missed sometimes, and we miss that narrative, we go to the negative, and there's so much positive to Maria's school tonight, so many great positives, and I, I really hope for the morale and staff, and we can lift our community up, and there is so much to be proud of, there are so many great things, and how are we going to focus on that? And the outcomes that we're seeing, and I think that's my little, little moment, but if we miss this opportunity, we will, we will hurt, we will hurt our educators more than ever, but we have got to recognize that they are working incredibly hard, many want to stay here, and that is our paraprofessionals, bus drivers, Kendall, everybody wants to be, it was a great, great school district, and I just hope that we can, we can lift up positive things, and not lose sight of all of the great things that are going on each and every day, so. I'm, I think that that would be my recommendation, that costs money, that is a good time to talk about it, because Suzie's working on budget right now, so if the board says, yeah, we want to do this, then I would ask that we can talk about it in May as well, but it sounds like there's good nodding around.
Yeah, that'd be great, especially, because again, it's all about the staff, they're the ones that do the work.
Yeah, K-12 Insights is the purple organization, it's been working with things over the years.
Great, okay, nice.
Okay, okay, with that for now, last chance, and moving on to policy developments.
Great, these are straight forward from.
Second readings, here. Any other comments on JLC, Student Health Services and Records, second reading?
Into a group.
All right, and, scared. Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bedevich. Can we do the JLC EAs as a group?
Yeah.
So can I get a motion? I move to accept the second reading of policies, JLC E A, G L C E A, R J L D A C, and J L D A C R. I forgot three times fast, second.
Second.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bedevich. Can I get a motion to retire J H C? Thank you, second.
Okay.
Johnson. Hi. Bowen. Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bedevich.
Hi. Annual work plan.
Tina, can I just share one?
Sure.
Pick up David. From the last board meeting, we talked about getting the policy for G, the grievance, those four policies that are all connected. Those have been sent to employers' council for review, she does not believe that she can get those back until the twenty-fifth, so as soon as I receive those, you'll get those, I'm going to send you some other ones that are A's, things like that, because it's a lot of policies, but the four that have been kind of in a woman are, won't be back until Monday, but just wanted to do that update.
Legislative updates, I don't know about you, but gosh, state boards pumping things out, House bills, Senate bills, a lot with special education, a lot with preschool, a lot with, yeah, charter A U's, just, there's a lot on the horizon that could significantly change policy and the way schools do business in the state of Colorado, so just be on the lookout for that. I had somebody, when we were talking about some particular things around, regarding what, what he is, they said, I'm not doing anything different until I find out this, this, and this, and all of this is at the state level, so when things start rolling out as big changes, and you are surprised and shocked about the impacts, please don't be, it is really coming from the state right now, a lot of different things that really will, the implications, how it gets rolled out, could have major changes for all of us, so just to be aware of that, expanded services, et cetera.
Is that because the state has the money this year?
No, they just expect us to do it without money.
Because next year could be different, so, maybe Suzie doesn't change her budget all along, fixed off the state.
Yeah, just saying, there's quite, there's quite a few things on. Yeah, just saying, there's quite, there's quite a few things on, on the agenda and that are passing right now.
She's gonna be super conservative again, just knowing that we can't count on it.
Appropriately so.
Yeah, and the ECA, it's, it's actually, we don't know how imminent, but that we may not be able to ask for an IEP plan for a choice student. So that is not that we want.
So you mean in advance of them coming?
In advance of them coming. So that could really impact our staffing, our just physical infrastructure. And so there's a lot of questions about what does that mean for, for our school.
So I think that's a good discussion also, because we're gonna probably have to address the concerns about the voces and communication of the staff. Because the way that rolled out tonight, I'm sure that that's not an isolated incident. Because that partnership with another voces and/or our internal services, how we sign that, are gonna be heavily impacted by that. And we're gonna have to be really nimble about that, Colleen.
And we do have a meeting with our specialist education teachers tomorrow morning.
Right, good, okay.
We're gonna have to change our choice policy then, because our choice policy says that those bands will come in before we accept.
Correct, so what it actually turns us into is much like what a charter school's legal responsibility is, that you enroll the student first, and then you hold an IEP meeting, official meeting, to determine if you can provide a free and appropriate education. And since this is the AU, if we are the AU, or if we have a larger AU, will be determinate how we do that. So our relationship with another voces would mean that they are the administrative unit. If we somehow decided to do it on our own, being rather small, that would be the administrative, administrative responsibility. I could spend all night on this, is what I do all day long, friends, but yes.
And notes, there's no new update on school finances, it's still where it's predicted right now.
And then board self-reflection, if we're moving on, it sounds like we need to change board retreat to what?
Party time.
That's what I wanna hear, guys.
We're gonna date pickups, that's a plus, we can change anyone over. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that would be really go over well on the top of the agenda. And people would really wonder what we were doing even more than they do now. So let's not, if you just wanna say really big, super big work session, you can do that. That'd be more appropriate perhaps.
So July eleventh.
Yeah.
You have a month after.
We got an invite.
So from the board's standpoint, I'm not sure if this is the time to do it, but it's kind of board self-reflection. A lot of stuff that we've dealt with, some stuff that came up tonight, some stuff that's kind of come up from a lot of different speakers, had to revolve around legal stuff and attorneys. I don't wanna talk any specifics about that. But how do we evaluate the attorney that represents our district? And what, what kind of, is there any, because at least third party, he's not just a contractor. He's a contractor, not an employee, correct? Like, he's on some sort of retainer. So it'd be interesting, probably an executive session, to go through some of the details of some of the legal decisions that have been made over the last, you know, six months or so. And what can, because I know we don't wanna look back, but if you don't look back, you're doomed or same mistakes you made before. I think everybody has, I, I certainly every day have a need for improvement. I suspect we as a board do as well. And to look at that, and to look at the work our attorney's done with the district, with the board, and how we could make that better, and how that's working for us, given all the kind of stuff that's been going on the last six months.
I don't know, I don't know if that's, I mean, some of that can be just in a work session depending on the topics. If we get too deeply into any topics that have already been discussed in executive session, that's a no-no. But if we're just talking about it broadly, if we talk about that in the worst work session, if you're just saying, how do we go through those processes of hiring, evaluating an attorney? That's fine. I mean, as long, you know, we don't dig into any of the particulars of the work that we've done with our attorney. Stop me if I'm wrong, friends.
We probably need to discuss some detail to actually make a reasonable assessment, which I think is really important.
I can tell you that when districts go through this, they'll, they'll put out an RFP. And they'll just say, what are the attributes that we're looking for in our attorney? Same attorney can put in that RFP or not. But yeah, that would be important, what, what does district want in, in those services?
I don't know if we want, I'm not suggesting an RFP. I'm suggesting, let's evaluate, is, is this relationship working for us? Since we are, well, we, because we're actually on the boards, we are taxpayers in the district. And taxpayers are paying the bill. The advice we've given is, you know, we just need to evaluate that. And probably need to have, you know, a candid discussion regarding it. Again, probably executive session, because it's legal things. And that, that makes perfect sense. I think everybody in the community understands that. But I think this is probably a really good time to do that.
Yeah, let's assess what aspects of that conversation may fall under executive session or what would not, and maybe tease that out. I plan on putting an executive session with our next work session in two weeks. And so that's the best, so sorry for saying the mild plans. I have, yeah, isn't it? Yeah. This world where it's just. Okay, so we might move that date, our board meeting perhaps? Or maybe we'll do it, yeah, because I don't wanna miss that, because there's a lot of food and fun at that event. And I recall being like, yeah.
It's really party time.
Yeah, that's my kind of fun, when my child was doing that. Thank you for asking, right? Teach my kid. A little surly sometimes.
Do you wanna reschedule that now then?
I don't know. How does the board feel about that?
I would like to schedule to Stephen's staff.
Yeah, that's right. I don't want you guys having to be here when that's going on. That is like such a fun event.
And school students you couldn't do earlier, probably, because then it starts at five thirty.
Let me see, are you saying start?
It starts at five, I'm trying, rural language starts at five, I'm like, down.
Mine started six.
I have the start.
I could be wrong.
Oh, well, six is great.
Or you could do the executive session before the work session.
We might as well switch to that.
Well, that may keep us focused and on a timed schedule.
We, we, we start at five.
Does it have five? Ooh, I, thank you, Jesse. Okay.
Five to eight.
Yes.
So, I mean, I could move a meeting and be here earlier that day. I don't know if anybody else wants to do this, and maybe move it earlier. Cat, Cat, okay. I am free in the afternoon of the third, fourth, or sixth that week.
There's girls soccer at four. I will not miss that. It looks like the fourth is just JV calling.
Just AV.
No, no, just JV, so I don't have to be at that one.
Okay. Guess what about you? I know you have the evening client center, it's hard for you.
Oh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I have our, I currently have our work session for thirty-six, so I have that slated right on the fifth. So obviously, that's not with moving it, but.
It's gonna be the rural language, like, like, does it start at five, like it's a three-hour program? Or is it a three-hour smorgasbord?
I mean, I see some of my points. Food trucks, thank you, Cat.
Come and go when you want.
The question though is squeezing in an executive.
I don't know much work session stuff we're gonna have.
We have a lot of policy.
Policy, and I feel like, yes, throw out some public comment things, probably, we have to talk about how we wanna.
Additional culture.
Definitely culture data. Okay. I'm fairly open. The week prior and the week after, I lied. Oh, no, no, I could do the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. I'd do. Okay, so looking, moving into the next week. I could do the tenth, eleventh, twelfth, yeah.
Football soccer playoffs starting, I assume the girls are playing, they're gonna be in playoffs.
Possible pre-subposition, yes.
This is the way the D's play them.
Yeah.
Can you do the twelfth?
Can you do the twelfth?
So I'm, I'm here because of my.
I could do the eleven? No on the eleven?
I think that's five.
If all of you are tired, this is the last thing, is setting this meeting. So if you're like, peace out, like, you get it, right? I know, I've been asked, like, when is the appropriate time? So let me just say, now is the appropriate time. Uh, the ninth, I can, I can do the ninth.
I can do the ninth.
So nice to meet you too.
I have a meeting at seven. Yeah, I knew, like, you, this is not the, yeah, right, my.
Well, you can work session same night as regular session on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth?
I had a medical procedure that morning.
I have that day marked off for somebody.
We have, we have regular meetings already slated.
No, I have the whole day marked off on the sixteenth. What do I think is happening that, oh.
Maria, I did want to speak, but.
I did.
Um, yes. So no, I can do, I can do it on the sixteenth, sorry. Meeting on Friday.
Sixteen, so do both, well, do you still do three?
Three meetings.
So what, so start at four-thirty?
Four-thirty. I wonder if you have a protocol that morning, for what, how that goes, what is that?
A what?
Protocol falls in the. Gary knows all about. It's the, it's the drug that killed Michael Jackson.
None of this sounds good. Okay, we're, we're, we're still being recorded. So are we, so we're looking at canceling the meeting, I just wanna say it out loud, on the fifth, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then doing it all on the sixteenth, like marathon meeting, not quite a retreat, but still a treat.
Party time.
A mini retreat, okay. Okay, if I have time on the fifteenth, I'll make those.
Starting at four-thirty.
Yeah, is there be good?
Session, regular meeting.
Everybody talking about it.
Executive session.
And the, in the.
Regular meeting, okay, let me make sure, okay.
So we need, we'll definitely need dinner.
Yeah. Can we get pizza? I love pizza. No, sorry. You like it too, yeah. I was gonna say, back me up on that desk.
Can we add to the executive session with item, board conduct, emails?
Um, so we don't talk about even agenda items for executive session? It's a very broad topic that we talk about, but we can talk about it, and you, you send me some specifics later. Yeah, so we're. Yes.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, so we'll cancel that. Okay, I'll get with our general counsel about that date.
So now for clarification, we're gonna start at four-thirty?
We're gonna start at four-thirty, right?
And we're gonna be done by?
You know what?
Four forty-five.
I'm making no guarantees. I drink coffee, it's just, I don't sleep.
Bedevich? Even chat.
I do not sleep.
Bye, Carrie.
Maybe start with the executive session, though, so more people are fresh.
That's, that's fine too. I mean, we'll see if our counsel can, and then we'll eat all the pizza.
But we really seriously need to set a time that we're gonna go here, and if we're not done with a topic, it gets moved to a different meeting. Instead of us dragging these things out for hours and hours, and everybody gets tired, they're all tired. Because I'd rather do that.
This is the executive session first? In the work session?
I heard that, but you guys told me.
Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't, yeah, doesn't matter to me.
So you'll do work session from what time?
Four-thirty to?
Four-thirty to the sixth?
To five-thirty, I don't have the attention span. I may have the interview, but not the attention span. I got kids.
All right, so four-thirty to five-thirty work session?
So we're not in the executive session approach?
Yes, we are, four-thirty, five-thirty.
Well, basically, four-thirty to five-thirty.
Well, we have to do a regular meeting for the executive session, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 you just, yeah, yeah.
So you wanna do a regular meeting?
For a regular meeting, go into executive, come back to regular meeting, finish the regular meeting. And then when do we do the work session?
You can do the work session after the regular meeting?
After the regular meeting, go and have the executive session.
In the work session after the regular meeting?
No, the regular session will only have the, the regular meeting will only have the executive session in it. And then we'll break the regular meeting. We kind of ran everything together anyways. Well, we can do then work session, regular, executive, and then back into regular to finish out the regular.
Yeah, so as long as everything's covered, I'm not particularly concerned because of order personally. So I'm not gonna get wrecked about it. So whatever, whatever works for Gary.
What? It's all about Gary.
Gary's almost tired.
How'd you guys have figured that out?
We, Kendall and I, we know, so we can.
So work session first, and four-thirty.
Four-thirty to five-thirty.
Four-thirty, five-thirty, then regular meeting at five-thirty, and the executive session will go first.
So we're inviting our attorney to come to that. Yes.
Yes. All right.
Sixteen.
And we're all gonna be at cultural night at the high school for snackies?
At the high school.
It's always at the high school, yeah. I'm gonna wear my German bibi. Okay, so let's circle back up, because we need to, that's right, can I get a motion? Can I get a second? Can I get a vote?
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith. Bedevich.
Hi, all right, guys, we've brought it back around, we brought it home, mental high five, bam!
Nice job, good job, Cat.